You want to? There we go. All right, let's, let's start with a call to order and a roll call.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
And Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Mueschek?
Here.
Mr. Rowena? I believe he's here, lost him for a second. Mr. Baxendale?
Here.
And Mr. Schumann?
Here.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm here.
Okay. First item on our agenda is 2021-28R Planning and Zoning Commission Proposed Amendments to Sections 118 through 700 and 118. Maybe that's dash, I apologize. 118-700 and 118-711 of the Building Zone Regulation to place a temporary moratorium on certain uses and distribution facilities in the industrial one zone as well as distribution facilities in the restricted industrial zone. I don't know, yeah, we have some people with us, so let me explain how these public hearings are run. In this case, either Steve or Brian Baker, or the two of them, will present the information. The commission members have an opportunity to raise questions throughout the presentation. When the presentation is completed, we will open it up for public comment. We ask that you keep your public comments as short as possible while still saying everything that you feel it's important to say. We expect a certain level of politeness and congeniality. And anyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity to speak. Once everyone who wants to speak has had an opportunity, we will turn it back to the planning and zoning staff for comments on any issues or questions that have been raised by the public. After that, we will close the public hearing. And after closing the public hearing, we will move to take action. We may or may not take action, but we will have a discussion of whether to take action and if it is agreed among the members, we, we will take action on this matter. We ask that when anyone, any member of the public comes to speak, that you please identify yourself by name and provide us with your, either your home address, or if you're talking about a specific location where you may be, for example, the property owner, that you give us that address. And before, before we open it to the public, we'll ask Brian Baker to explain just how the public can ask to speak. And with that, Steve, you're going to make the presentation?
Sure, and I'll, I'll be brief in the interest of time. So this item is a basically a continuation of a prior action the commission took. About two years ago, we started the process of taking on a study of the industrial zones and is at the kind of the beginning stage of that, we thought it was appropriate to put a moratorium on certain uses, thinking that those uses were identified early on as kind of problematic uses in the industrial zones. Two of those uses were single-family and two-family residential uses in the industrial one zone, contractor yard was obviously a use that was identified early on as a concern industrial one zone. And we also looked at self-storage facilities and distribution facilities, which also overlap into the restricted industrial zone. So we placed a one-year moratorium on that, we extended it out several months, which is just about expired, it hasn't expired today. But the, you know, the, the process of revising the regulations with the complete plan is, is underway. The, the items have been referred to the Economic and Community Development Commission of Common Council, who's holding their hearings on that, which continue in a couple of weeks. I anticipate having an action from them next month. So we decided to extend the moratorium out through September of 2022 to allow that process to be completed. And then for this, this body to hold their hearings, they have to, you know, vote to A, amend the Plan of Conservation and Development to incorporate the industrial zone study, and then B, on a separate action, vote on the changes to the industrial zones. Those obviously aren't under consideration tonight, so the only action you're really looking to do is to extend the existing moratoriums through September of 2022.
Okay. There any questions from commission members? I know we've been over this many times. If not, we'll open up to the public. Brian, you want to explain how the public can access?
Sure, so if you are a member of the public and you'd like to speak on this application, you can use the raise your hand tool, it's at the bottom of your screen. And if you're dialing on a phone, you could hit star nine.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you, Diane Cece, East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. I'll be speaking at length on the second hearing, but I just want to make a brief comment, so it's on the record here on this continuation of the moratorium. That we had requested that the moratorium be extended to a number of other uses that we also felt would be objectionable should an application come in. And I realize at this late date, because it's a published, public hearing, that that much of an amendment is not likely to be made, and we've kind of been down this road before. I just wanted it on the record again, that we have asked for a number of other uses to be excluded as well through the moratorium. Things like propane storage facilities, commercial vehicle storage, recycling centers, wastewater treatment operations, et cetera, utility storage. And we certainly understand Mr. Kleppen's experience with these matters, when he advises you that the likelihood of one of these types of applications coming in is slim to none. But the fact remains that while they're still approved and they're not under moratorium, and in fact, if you don't remove them from the industrial zones when you update that, that an application could come in. And whether there's special permit or not, your hands might be tied in rejecting those. And then the second part of that, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, was that we had early on asked for also a moratorium on all special permits while the industrial zone study was going on, which would also have affect the community and prohibit anything of a nature that would, in the first place, require a special permit from even applying. And so I guess the decision was made that that would be burdensome or possibly not serve other purposes. So in the end, I, for all the reasons that Mr. Kleppen just said, I would support the extension of the moratorium through at least September, which I guess is the timeframe for the adoption that has the other changes in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool or hit star nine. I think that's it, Lou.
Okay, one last time, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, if not, Steve, we'll turn it back to you.
I have nothing further unless you have questions.
All right. Any, any questions from commission members? All right, seeing none.
We did, we did, we did send this out to Harbor, DEP, and Steve, we sent it to other towns, West Cog.
Yes, West Cog and the Butters, and there were no, we didn't receive any comments back there. The comments we got back from Deep and also Harbor, they were, are interested in the second phase of the study related to the waterfront, so there'll be comments related to that as that one comes.
Okay. Then we'll close the hearing. And we'll move on to action on this matter. Is there a motion by a member of the commission?
I make the motion, Mike Mueschek.
Mike, what is the motion you make?
Oh, to approve the resolution.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, looks like Nick Cantor is seconding. Any further discussion on this? All right, the only comment I'd make is that I think this is the right action to take. The action we took when we approved this initially was to give us time to rewrite and adapt the, the new zoning regulations. And since that is not anticipated to be accomplished before either late summer or very early in September, makes sense to me that we extend the moratorium. With that, I'll ask for a vote. Steve, if, if you would, do a roll call. And I'll also mention while Steve's getting that in order, that Commissioner Wells has joined us.
You did, Steve.
Sorry, I was wondering why Nick wasn't answering me. Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Mueschek?
Yes.
Mr. Baxendale?
Yes.
And Mr. Schumann?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
All right, moving on to our second public hearing. This is 2022-17R, the Norwalk Conservatory of the Arts Zoning Regulation Amendment to Section 118-100, 118-500, 118-1220 to add a dormitory use to the East Avenue Village District by special permit, dormitory definition, and parking requirements. And I would invite whoever is presenting. Is that you, Steve?
I'd be Danny if, if Danny's there.
I am here, hi. Hello.
Hi.
How's it going?
Please, go ahead.
Sure, I'm Danny Loftus George, here on behalf of the Norwalk Conservatory of the Arts. We are a new undergraduate college coming to Norwalk. Our principal place of business is now 69 Wall Street. So our emphasis really is on building up the Wall Street area and bringing a college to Norwalk. So we are looking at turning 102 East Ave into dormitories, as the majority of our students are coming from all over the country. We have very few students that will be coming in from the state of Connecticut, from Texas, Ohio, Florida, Georgia, you name it, they are coming in, which is very exciting. We start this summer, but our first two-year Conservatory College program begins August of 2023. And that, that sums it up, I think.
What type of recognition? Academic recognition does the university either have or hope to have?
Yeah, so there's two types of accreditations when it comes to higher education. The first is a necessary state accreditation. This would be through the Department of Higher Education for the state of Connecticut. That takes about a full calendar year, you must start it within the calendar year that you're beginning to, to offer a program, so we're in the process of that application presently. The second type of adjudication is through an accreditation, is through, there's six different governing bodies across the country. So when you're thinking of New England, it's the NIEC chapter. You cannot apply for that accreditation, and so you've run two years of courses. Once you've run two years, then you can apply, and that would be for a bachelor's degree.
And are you anticipating that you will be offering a bachelor's degree?
Yes, yes, so my history is in higher education, I've built bachelor's programs for 42 universities. This will be my 43rd, which is very exciting, especially because I now am living in Norwalk. So yes, we, we will be applying for bachelors, we plan to start with a two-year associates, ideally in conjunction with NCC.
And how many students are you anticipating in your startup year?
We're only accepting 48 into year one. We have three majors, they're all arts performance majors, the first is musical theater, the next is dance, and then television and film, all performance-based.
So, so it's a bachelor of fine arts that you're shooting for, right?
That's correct, yes.
Will there be any traditional academic programming at all?
Yeah, so the requirement for BFA is you have to have four semesters of liberal arts. So essentially, something that ties in with their course of study is typically recommended, and then just one credit of science. We typically tie that into with their course of study. For example, if they're studying television and film, we might do a course on neuroscience and psychology, so they can understand how the brain works and why people do what they do. If it's for dance, we might do a health and fitness nutrition requirement to fulfill that requirement, depends on the major. But no, it is, we are definitely not an academic institution as much as we are an arts institution.
As a practical matter, excuse me. How are you expecting your students to travel from the housing to, to the school site?
Yeah, all on foot, so we're within a half mile. Our, our main building is at 69 Wall Street, but we've also now partnered with Factory Underground, with Juice Media, and with GCA, as well as the Wall Street Theater downtown. The idea is we get to grow our campus a little bit faster, and we are also helping other small businesses in the area after COVID to provide more content, both for their facilities and for the people they have on staff. So all walkable, and we are not, we are not allowing any students to have a car on campus.
Okay. Other questions?
What's your sort of growth? Go ahead.
I wonder if you could just identify the two buildings you're talking about, just so I can visualize where you are.
Totally, so the, the actual building that we've assigned our lease at is at 69 Wall. That is directly next to the Wall Street Theater. It is right above Fairfield County Bank. It is in between where the old Fairfield County Bank was and where the new location is. And that is the basement, first floor, second floor, and third floor. There will be our flagship building, and then 102 East Ave is dormitories, that is directly across from the Chamber of Commerce.
What's the use of that building now?
It was an ophthalmologist's office.
It's Dr. Wong's office.
Yes, Dr. Wong, and then upstairs it has two tenants in place.
And the proposal would be to make that all housing?
That's correct, all, all dormitory.
And how many people would you expect to live there?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think at minimum, we would probably put about 36, at maximum 52.
What sort of your growth projections?
Sorry, I'm just trying to find out who's talking, it's moving so quickly.
Nick, sorry. Don't make it on his lap, how are you?
That's okay, I have one year old, so I totally understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great question. So for year one, we're taking just 50 students, actually 48 to be exact, and that's because we only accept 16 in each major. Every time you go past that, the education tends to suffer in terms of quality control in the arts. So we'll be taking 16 in each major, that's 48. Year two will double that number, year three, we expect to double that number. By year five, we're looking at anywhere from 400 to 500 students.
Gotcha, and the current location is only dorming for 50 of them, but is the hope that you'll find locations throughout the city to hold the whole student body?
That's correct.
Close to as possible?
Yeah, the hope is to really build up Wall Street as much as possible there, and to create a real college campus feeling on Wall Street, so that we can help grow all the businesses that are local there. We are not building a dining facility presently, so we're partnering with all the local restaurants, so the parents can give the kids dining dollars to support our restaurants, as well as partnering with the other local businesses.
That's a great way to work through that.
Yeah.
Oh. Will, will you have any cooking facilities in the dormitory?
Yeah, so there'll be kitchen facilities for, for students to cook.
Sounds good.
So if anyone is looking to...
Just a general question here, this, this is a new zone that we're talking about making, or a new use? Dormitory use?
Yeah, I can, I can probably help answer that. So, Richard, in the East Avenue Village District, in many of the commercial zones, there's, we have the use of colleges or public universities, and it stopped short of dormitories. So what the proposal is, is to add dormitory onto the end of that use, so it would read colleges, public universities, and dormitories.
The reason I'm asking is I was a patient of Dr. Wong since I came to Norwalk 100 years ago, so I've been in that parking lot once or twice. And I, I'm, I'm just like closing my eyes and thinking, and I, I don't believe that there's more than 12 or 14 spaces in that lot. What would the proposed parking requirements be for, let's say, if 56 kids lived in there?
To answer? So there, there are 18 parking spots presently there, but we are not allowing, as an institution, we are not allowing students to bring cars on campus.
Including? Including the?
Including the dormitories, that's correct. Yeah, the only people that are allowed to park a dormitory is our resident advisors, who are prior students.
The parking proposed under the, the application, Richard, was 0.5 spaces per dorm room.
I'm sorry?
0.5 spaces per dorm.
How would one control that if a student, let's say, takes a car and parks it off-site? There's no control in that way, right? It's just the only control you have is on-site.
Yeah, it's, I, I mean, it's a bit like any business, right? And if someone wants to park off-site, for any company, they can park off-site. We're unable to control off-site parking.
Other questions for Mr. George?
Can you give any examples of where you've set up a dormitory in all these 42 other places that you've been part of?
I've never worked in housing for other institutions, so I typically come in, my, my business for the last 10 years has been revitalizing programs. UConn is probably the best example, that's my, that's the only Connecticut school I work with. And what we do there is we revitalize curriculums to make them to make them more relevant to today's theatrical market and industry. So I bring in different professors, I bring in big celebrity names typically to work with the students, and then we bring them to New York City to showcase, we, we basically revitalize their, the theatrical programs and their curriculums to better fit today's need in the market.
Thank you.
Is this going to be a public institution or privately owned institution?
It is a private not-for-profit.
Okay. Anything else? All right, if not, we'll open it up to the public for comment. Again, Brian, you want to explain how people who wish to speak can access? Can access us?
Sure, so if you'd like to speak on this application, you can use the raise your hand tool, it's at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialed in on a phone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand.
Thank you, Brian Baker, this is Diane Cece again. I wanted to ask, I have a rather lengthy statement to make on a number of areas of this application. And if there are other people who have their hands raised, I would be happy to defer to them for their comment first and then be last.
Didn't seem like anyone was raising their hand, Diane.
Okay. All right, so thank you for that, and just for the record again, my name is Diane Cece, I live on Olmstead Place. I am on the board of the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association, but I'm speaking as a private resident this evening on this. And I do want to be clear that even though I live on the other end of East Avenue, which is what is becoming the, the Village Transit Zone, different than the Village District that this is in, I'm very concerned about the implications of your approving this application, and that's why I feel compelled to speak tonight. Mr. Chairman, I hope you'll bear with me and grant me the appropriate time, because I want to address with the commission four segments of feedback and questions that I have regarding the application. And there wasn't a whole lot of time to put this together, given the posting on last Friday, so if it's a little disjointed, I also apologize for that. But I'm going to speak to the, the process of whether or not this does comply with the POCD, a little bit about the applicant and that use, and then finally, the zone amendment itself. I am going to use the Norwalk Conservatory of the Arts as an example for the zone amendment, because that is the applicant, and it's the only one that, you know, realistically, I can use today to, as I highlight some of this. So first, first to the process, and this may be to staff, I just, I wanted to point out that the legal notice was, was posted in the hour on May 4th, but the actual details and subsequent modified resolution text were not available until the memorandum from staff, and that wasn't posted until Friday, May 13th. Besides the legal notice in the newspaper, I learned from Mr. Baker that there's no other requirement for zone amendments to notify property owners in the zone, not even the abutting owners. And so I would venture a guess that few of the property owners from the green all the way to the highway, which is the whole district, are even aware of this zone change. Because of the far-reaching implications of it, even with the modification suggested by attorney Adam Blank, which I guess the commissioners will talk about in a moment, I asked that you consider denying the application, or at the very least, postpone a vote on this matter until the public at large, and especially the East Ave Village District owners in particular, can be apprised of the change, and then be able to consider their concerns with this. As to the POCD, if I understand from staff correctly, you're intending to vote on this tonight, and based on that alone, I would ask that you deny the application at this point, or again, postpone it. It may comply with what you consider the letter of the law in some components in the POCD, but I don't think it complies with the spirit of the intent of luring or attracting colleges and universities into the city center. In fact, the POCD goals that are being cited, there's only three of them, and all three of the goals that are being cited for this application fall under one chapter, prosperity and opportunity. I would argue that allowing the dormitory use as a means of luring an existence... I would argue that allowing the dormitory use as a means of luring an existing school in South Norwalk, their pre-college program, from one location to another, only serves to provide prosperity and opportunity to two entities. The owner or prospective owners of one oh two East Avenue, and we're not clear on that. I'll speak to that in a minute. Mr. Daniel George and Mr. Ricky Loftus, and then the founders of the Norwalk Conservatory of the Arts, one of which is Mr. George and another two people that don't live in Connecticut. I understand now, and I'll just amend this as I speak, that he, Mr. George has told you that the operation is at sixty-nine Wall Street. And I'm glad to hear that now, because I couldn't find that in any of my research on their website, even under their admissions and applications program. And what I did find is a relationship with the Palace Theater in South Norwalk and text on their website, which I'm sure he'll clarify, that they provide housing now for double and triple occupancy in both South Norwalk and at the Norwalk Inn. Though the college tax status, tax status will be nonprofit, the business model and tuition rates will certainly allow for prosperity and opportunity for this organization. Their site lists a tuition at thirty-five thousand dollars a year, in which virtually guarantees students will not be from diverse economic backgrounds. And according to a recent publication, because the college will not be accredited for a number of years under the process Mr. George just shared with you, they state that if students in need of financial aid would not be eligible for federal aid or Pell Grants until that happens. In the July twenty-twenty-one article, the publication called Inside Higher Education, Deborah Obilic, Obilil, who is the president and executive director of the Association of Independent Colleges of Art and Design, pointed out it would be difficult for some students to attend the school. Quote, "Any institution that cannot access federal, cannot access federal financial aid support is automatically self-selecting into a certain demographic of students." End quote. Speaking of ownership, and also back under the heading of process, I wanted to point out to the commissioners that at the time the amendment application was originally posted on the city website, which I believe was right around the time of the legal notice, the application letter from Mr. George identified his and Mr. Loftus's company, GeoTest LLC, as quote, "owning property in Norwalk at one oh two East Avenue." But a newer version of the letter with the exact same letter date and posting dates has suddenly appeared on the website over the past couple of days, and is not noted as revised. And it has been amended to read that GeoTest LLC with, is quote, "a fully executed contract in Norwalk at one oh two East Avenue." Now, I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV, but I know there's a couple of lawyers on this commission. And so my question would be that, you know, first, my point would be that it's misleading to the public to substitute documents on the website without any indication that they've been revised. In the past, staff has posted revisions as such, including the date of the revision in the posting. So I think it's fair for me to ask why that wasn't done in this case, and if anything else in the posted documents has been modified without notification. Again, I, I, you know, I think it speaks to, you know, whether the applicant, without owning that building, can, can even apply. So this may be for, for the lawyers and for staff to answer. My, my question would be whether GeoTest LLC actually owns one oh two East Avenue or not. Can a non-owner file for the zoning amendment in the zone? If not, is that why their zoning amendment application was changed from owning to quote, having a fully executed contract to buy it? If so, and assuming the contract's a private document, obviously, can it at least be produced for the zoning staff to confirm its existence and the contingencies attached to it? Speaking of ownership, a June twenty-twenty-one Norwalk Hour article reported that the conservatory had, quote, recently acquired a South Norwalk location and was looking for a beneficiary to help fund the renovations needed as the college is a nonprofit. Mr. George said the plant, the school plant that had the location fully ready for use by twenty-twenty-four. I wanted to know, you know, is that facility the Palace Theater facility, and what is the relationship of the application to another potential use there? And as their website indicates that they provide housing today in South Norwalk, where is that exactly? Yet another page in the website tells you that housing is provided with double occupancy by the Norwalk Inn, which they describe as being, quote, "directly across from our dormitories and campus." Well, there, there are no dormitories in campus across from ninety-nine in the, in the chamber. So can staff please clearly, can staff clarify where any school affiliated with the conservatory currently operates in Norwalk? And perhaps it is only sixty-nine Wall Street. Where any housing in Norwalk is being provided for students, including their upcoming June and July pre-college program, and why they are describing a parcel on East Avenue as being current dormitories and campus. And finally, onto the zone amendment itself, and then parking. And I'm really speaking to, again, I'm going to use the college as an example, because this is part of the application, even though it's a zone amendment. And I really want, as I go through this, I hope that you'll consider the possible unintended consequences if you approve this for the Village District. I'd like to read another quote from Mr. George from just a year ago. On June twentieth of twenty-twenty-one in the Norwalk Hour, he quoted with the reporter, "This is going to change the face of the town. We expect seventy-five students in year one, but will grow into the thousands in the next five to ten years," end quote. So what exactly does this mean for this and similar applications within the zone? Assuming any vote to approve would be using the modified language from attorney Blank. I also want to bring up at this point that there's a question as to the definition. I have a question in this, Mr. Kleppen, maybe you can make note of this in your comments. In the amendment itself, the language reads that it is for I'm sorry, you're with me. In your definition where you're defining dormitory, it says a building containing a number of private or semi-private sleeping quarters. So I wanted to know if there's a city definition for sleeping quarter, number one. And then number two, when you define dormitory, when you talk about dormitories in the parking grid, that then becomes translated to a half of a parking space per dorm room. Whereas all other parking in the city for residential says parking units per dwelling unit. And so, Mr. Kleppen, I went back into the definitions in the city code. And while there are definitions for both dwelling unit and elderly housing units, which are cited here, there is no such definition for anything called a dorm room. Okay, number two. So in addition to what this means in the East Avenue Village District, should this be approved? Because it's not just for this applicant, it would be for the whole district by special permit. I'd like to know what this means because the litmus test then for this and other applicants to amend other zones. Because, you know, obviously, they may want to expand. And I'm talking about in particular, East Avenue Village Transit Zone, which is the southern portion of East Avenue. Rowayton Village District, Silvermine Village District, Golden Hill Village District, Neighborhood Business Zones, et cetera. Staff has already noted in the package before you tonight that, quote, one, I'm not, or not quote, I'm sorry, that one, one can assume this would become an approved use in every commercial zone in the city. Number three, for one oh two East Avenue, the personal question for which this application is required, I'd like to know exactly how many dwelling units would be allowed under this change, assuming the minimum parking requirements. And, and again, this goes to speak into dorm room, dwelling unit, you know, roommates, et cetera. Also, not that, also noting again, that dorm room is not, is the definition in our code. And, and it has been cited that their anticipation is that they would have double and triple occupancy. So when you say a half a parking space per, per dorm, if a dorm room can have three people, you know, then you can do the math itself. And thank you for Mr. Baker to trying to explain it again to me, but I'll, I'll do a little math of my own, which brings me to parking. Is staff aware that the college's application states that all students must be eighteen years or older? Considering this demographic, it's not unreasonable to assume that most of all of the students will be licensed drivers. Now, bear in mind, I'm only hearing tonight from the applicant that they intend to enforce something where the students wouldn't be allowed to have cars on campus or at the dormitories. But I didn't know that before I wrote this, and I'm also concerned about enforcement of that. And if they're not having cars, they can certainly have friends and family and other people then who would be able to park there. Since the housing is being offered now for pre-college and soon for the new two-year college, it's not, it's not unreasonable to assume that many of the students will be from out of town, rabbit state, and therefore will likely have cars regardless. In fact, Mr. George just told you that in all likelihood, the students will not be from Connecticut, they'll be from all over the country. Because the applicant is seeking to maximize the number of students in the dormitory, it's seven thousand five hundred dollars housing cost per student per semester. Staff is suggesting just a half a car per space per unit. In my mind, that means if there are ten units with two students each in the building, there would be twenty students. But only five parking spaces needed, need to be provided for all of their uses. Hardly enough for dorm capacity, much less visiting friends and family. And again, I'm not sure now, under the new explanation he gave us of no cars, how that would be enforced, but and then to that, it's a little ridiculous with, with, you know, that type of use to if you, if you, if you didn't have a means of actually limiting the number of cars or prohibiting the students from having them. One of the concerns would be that in that corridor, as you know, if there were a need for overflow parking on that property, the only alternatives are for people there to park on surrounding private property. And then the absence of that, doing it illegally, it would be forced to take parking on neighborhood residential streets. Okay, my other point speaks to young mobile adults, but again, Mr. George has indicated they won't be allowed to have cars, and we'll have to take that and, and trust that that's the case. And I think that that needs to be when you do your condition list, I try, I hope that that's a serious and enforceable condition there. So in fact, Commissioner Rowena, you'll find this interesting, because I, I just wanted to point out that, I mean, it was just last week, I believe, that even you pointed out that two adults living in an A D U under what we're considering, having only one car is actually kind of ludicrous as well. So my recommendation actually was that you should consider the possible burden you create when you only have these amount of spaces, if the students do have cars. You know, they'll be asked to be giving rides all the place. They may be, you know, lending their cars to other teenagers. Perhaps there'll be, you know, when they're not at the school, there needs to be accommodations for, you know, shopping, errands, medical appointments, recreation, et cetera. And I, I just suggest, and I'm not being sarcastic in any way, but I am suggesting that thirty-five thousand dollars, you know, tuition and eight, seven thousand dollars rooming for a semester that perhaps they can afford to Uber everywhere, but I'm not sure how realistic that is, and I'm not sure how that would work. If you are inclined to approve the application, I suggested you further amend attorney Blank's version to add language similar to other colleges where they would not be allowed to have cars on campus. And that the, that it would be the responsibility of the conservatory to, to provide you with proof of adequate transportation options, including the ones I just named, for shopping, errands, medical appointments, recreational needs, et cetera. And then in attorney Blank's recommendation that the applicants only be students that enrolled at school as an effective tool to control abuse, and also to revisit the housing, should the conservatory either fail or move out of Norwalk. So I'm just wondering how that can possibly be enforced? Because clearly, if they move out, the GeoTest, which is Mr. George and his partner, Mr. Loftus, who is also on the faculty of the school, by the way, they would still own this property and presumably have the ability to rent it out. But compliance then be on the honor system to prove that there are actually students who are enrolled and living there? Would the city require student affidavits at the beginning of each semester? Who could periodically inspect for compliance, and how would you do that? And if there is a violation, would the remedy be to simply modify the zone amendment in order for them to be compliant? And that would be a major concern. And finally, I want to say to the commissioners, I hope you can see in just a couple of days' time to review this application materials and doing a little bit of due diligence on my own on the applicant and the use, I've raised many legitimate concerns and questions. Some of which I think have been answered, and I hope you'll address all of them. I also think that despite your and everyone's desire to be able to both, if a performing arts college in our city, that some, or perhaps all of you, may have the same concerns that I do tonight. In the end, I just keep thinking that this zoning amendment is a slippery slope. And it's a situation in which, once it's approved, it's a bill you can't unring. And the yet-to-be-unknown consequences could be even further, could even further forever change the Upper East Avenue Village District and impact the quality of life for the residential and professional neighbors there. And as you already know, tonight, the goal would be to expand this into the possibility, the goal would be to expand this use and other permission, permit to commercial zones. I thank you for allowing me the time, because we only get one bite at the apple. We're not allowed to rebut, and on the chance that you're not going to postpone this and hold, open the hearing, I wanted to be able to be sure, as Mr. Scholman invited me to do, to be able to say all that I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. George, you now have the, now have the opportunity to respond.
Oh, boy. So I, I, I understand your concerns regarding parking to, to begin with. I think that you should know, as with any university building in two thousand twenty-two, no family or guests are permitted into the dormitories unless they are a resident advisor or a student or are on staff doing routine maintenance. So they are not allowed, family and friends, unless they are moving in or moving out of the facility. So I don't think that's a legitimate concern. In terms of parking, there is no parking allowed on campus if they are living in the facility. And one of the amendments to the dormitory regulation was that they must be enrolled in the institution in order to live in the dormitory. So any student that is living in the dormitory is enrolled in the institution or is a resident advisor. You will have three resident advisors in the building. I'm slightly offended by the ideology behind what students were going to be, be able to bring into the conservatory. That is not legitimate and is incredibly difficult to hear. As we are already enrolling forty-eight students presently, we have forty-eight enrolled from all over the country for our summer programming. We are working with the Norwalk Inn this summer, as we do not have dormitories. So all students are staying in partnership with the Norwalk Inn. I understand that you see some discrepancies. Happy to address them. But ultimately, we are a not-for-profit. We are a not-for-profit as to which I, I don't receive a salary at the not-for-profit. It's public domain, obviously, so you can always look that up too, if you'd like. But ultimately, our students are from a bunch of different backgrounds. And they are able to afford at different rates based on grants and based on scholarship opportunities presented to them, regardless of federal aid or Pell Grants, which we are eligible for after year two. Trying to think what else I can address there. I'm so sorry. Sorry?
Palace Theater.
Ah, the Palace Theater, yes. No, we are not involved with the Palace Theater. I'd love to be involved with the Palace Theater. My God, it's a gorgeous space. It's, it's got unbelievable history there, and I'd love to one day be able to work out of there, but no, we, we do not have that space. We have never had that space. We don't have housing in that space. That space is currently up for sale. So no, we have no affiliation with Palace Theater. We're not housed there. We have no classes in South Norwalk. Everything is in the Wall Street area.
Mr. George, I assume that if a student doesn't wish to live in the dormitory, that they can live elsewhere.
That's correct, yeah. It's not required at all.
And then I can, I can address some of the issues with any of the postings. So the application was originally posted on the website on April eighteenth. My staff memo wasn't posted until last Friday. If that's what Ms. CC is referring to, that the staff memo is not the application. It's, you know, my research into the application and how it relates to the P O C D. And then as far as legal notices, for a text change, you are only required to post a legal notice twice in the paper regarding the public hearing. There is no neighbor notification through state statute, through our regulations. And then lastly, the application for a text amendment, it's not specific to a property. So you do not need to be the owner or have permission from the owner of the property to apply for a text amendment. When Danny will, if this is approved and Danny applies for the dorm, that is when he will need, if he's not the owner of the property, will need to have permission of the property owner. And that's when he will notify the butters and go through that process separately.
Steve, I see your hand is up.
Yes, I just wanted to make one quick comment, and then Brian O'Brien addressed this in his memo. I can tell you firsthand that this getting a higher education institution into Norwalk, specifically in the Wall Street area, was one of the chief goals of the 2019 Citywide Plan. That's something we talked about extensively. I've had numerous conversations with folks in economic community development and also with the Board of Ed about ways we could try to recruit schools. We reached out and had conversations with other schools in the past, you know, pre-COVID. So getting this in downtown Norwalk to me is an absolute home run.
I wanted to say that I agree with Ms. CC on the question of notification. Not that we did anything wrong. I know we follow the rules. But I think we've noted a couple of times before that we think that, that some of us believe that our notification requirements really should be beefed up so that we can, we can reach as many people as possible. It doesn't go to her specific concern, but I, since it's come up before, I thought I would just mention that. Any further comments?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, Richard and then Galen.
I agree with what Steve said, that I think it's a tremendous idea for a school on Wall Street. And I'm just still scratching my head a little bit about the definition of the dorm and the parking requirements and all the rest of it. Because initially, I was thinking to myself that, given where Dr. Wong's office is, if parking was going to leak over into other places, I'm sure the owners of those places would have those cars towed faster than the people could walk down the street. It does concern me about parking on public streets because it's really annoying. I happen to know from firsthand experience. So I guess I'm thinking to myself, the point five parking spaces per dorm room, if there's eighteen spaces, would mean that there can't be more than thirty-six rooms. But if there's two people in a room, that's seventy-two people, which could conceivably mean seventy-two cars. So I don't know. I love the idea. I'm not against the concept of a dormitory zone. I just think maybe we need a little more input into it, I think. I'm done.
If I'm next, my experience was when my children went to college, and they went to college outside of Connecticut, both of them. When they lived in the dormitory, we drove them and dropped them off. None of the kids who lived in a dormitory had their cars. That's why they lived in the dormitory. You know, they lived in the dormitory to be close to their classes and to be able to function in the school setting without a car. When they got to be juniors and seniors and they wanted to have a car, they then lived off-campus. And all these students would have the opportunity to live off-campus if they want to have a car. But if they want to live in the dormitory, the purpose is to allow them to be able to live close to the campus and function in the campus without driving. So I think the idea of the parking spaces is way, way overblown as an issue, frankly. Or that's what I observed from my children's experience.
But the dormitories that you're talking about, I'm sure were within the confines of a school/university setting like, let's say Sacred Heart or Bridge Board or one of those. And I'm not criticizing Mr. George's school, but he's in a building on Wall Street that's a half a mile away from this house. It's not exactly the same kind of setting.
No, but it's very close. It's within walking distance, and there's no place closer that they could be. It's a way to, you know, give house-
Again, I'm not criticizing it, Kayle. I'm just saying it's not the same as being on campus. Because this is not on campus.
Well, it is, in my view, it is on campus. It's, you know, it's a loose, more loosely structured campus, but it's the same idea. But I don't want to be argumentative about it, but that's-
Yeah, no, the thing that I'm concerned about is not so much this building with his school as Diane pointed out, that, you know, the far-ranging effects it could have on other buildings. And it seems like the requirement for a student to be registered at a school that owns the dormitory is a good safety feature. And I wonder how that could be enforced. I suppose the same as the affidavits that are required for in-law apartments, but I think the concept is good. I'm just, I just don't have it like clear in my head right now. I don't know if I would vote tonight to say yes to everything, but I do like it.
Could we put in the amendment that it's a dormitory, but for the use of people enrolled in the school associated with the dormitory only?
Well, yes, that's what I'm thinking. It should say. And I read Adam's letter. He raised a lot of good points, I thought. And I read the proposed text amendment, which, you know, given the fact that it was the first shot at it, I thought it was very good too.
And the one thing that was suggested also is the distance requirement as far for the dorm to actually be within a certain distance of the school. If you wanted to discuss that, if half-mile is reasonable or if, you know, what your thoughts are on that.
We need some younger people on the board, you know, half-mile is not walking distance for me.
Yeah, but if you're a kid, it is. Oh, my God.
I didn't have a car.
For me either, I must say.
I got my new knee last month, so maybe, maybe it will.
For our purposes specifically too, I mean, to speak on that, they're all actors and dancers, they're all athletes, they're all in the performing arts. You know, a half-mile is nothing for them.
Unless they're coming from Florida and they have to walk in December.
I have a comment.
Michael, Michael and then Brian.
Okay. So I went to Rutgers a long time ago, maybe forty years, maybe a little longer. No, I graduated forty years ago, actually. So I remember a school of the arts, Mason Gross School of the Arts in downtown Brunswick. I was at Cook Campus, which is now the change of the name again, but anyway, it was the old Ag School outside of town. But I'm bringing this up because I remember I had a lot of friends at Mason Gross in the performing arts. They seemed to be a lot of fun compared to the people doing swine production as a major out at the Ag School. So, but it was an urban campus. The point I'm trying to make is that this is kind of an urban formula for a school, not a suburban kind of standalone formula, and you can look at examples all over. It's not just, you know, I just know from my history of life in New Jersey, Princeton University had a campus, but it was integrated into the community intensely. And Rutgers was as well. Mason Gross School of the Arts was in an old department store downtown. And the people, the students lived in various places all over New Brunswick. And they did have a shuttle service because there were fifty-six thousand students at Rutgers when I was there, and I got only no idea how big it is now. But in any case, I have no problem with understanding a dormitory a few blocks or half a mile away. Bicycles certainly are an option. I can't say East Avenue is exactly bike-friendly, but we're working on that. But there is the Harbor Loop Trail at the bottom of the hill that is being improved and missing links are being filled in actively, you know, including under Yankee Doodle Bridge. So there's potentially, in the long run, a route off-street that would get you by bicycle or foot down into South Norwalk for the nightlife, to Wall Street, of course, for also the nightlife or for the campus. But there is a trail system that is available that's mostly built already, that is off East Avenue. And so I have no issue with the parking requirement. I think that's been explained. I have no issue with this. I think it's a huge coup for Norwalk to have a new school like this for lots of reasons. And I would imagine that some people would, some students would fall in love with Norwalk for an hour by train to the city, and they would decide to live here. And I think that, and then they would decide to invest in the community, buy houses. You know, all of this. It's always been my argument for the apartments that are being built. We're trying to hold on to young people. This is basically a captive audience of young people that is part of, would become part of a thriving local economy. I looked at Stanford with envy when they got UConn campus, which is in the old Bloomingdales, I think, or is it Bambergers? Or there was an old department store turned into a university. They took over an old apartment building and made it a dormitory out on Washington Boulevard. And all of this was greeted with great fanfare. City of Stanford worked with the, of course, that's an established university, but UConn. But it has transformed downtown Stanford and made it a real destination. It's been a part of it anyway. And so I have no problem with this. I think we should put out the red carpet for this sort of organization. And I'm willing to to adopt language that Adam Blank had offered. I thought that was, that offered protections for the city and neighborhoods. And, you know, I think that, anyway, I'll stop, but that's where I stand.
Thanks, Mike. Brian?
Very much in support of the concept of the school. It's dead in line with what we wanted in the P O C D, so I'm with Steve on this and other people. I do think we need to tighten up somewhere along Adam Blank's suggestions. And on a very emotional note, which may not sound totally rational, I hate the term dormitory. But that's beside the point. I think we do need to tighten up on some of the phraseology and whatever we move forward with. And also, I have a sympathy with Diane CC that we do appear to have a need to have some more public input. Just so the public is aware, because it is a, it is the village area, frankly. We need to be conscious of that. Thank you.
But nonetheless, in this case, of course, we complied with what the rules are. If we want to change the rules for the future, that's another question, right?
Absolutely.
If that's what the staff say, I must admit, I haven't read the rules that closely as a lawyer, but leave it to you, staff. So staff, is it something that at the moment we could pass? Because the rules, they're well in line with the rules?
Yeah, so text amendment, the only requirements as far as public notices, posting in the paper of the public hearing twice. And then again, to actually apply for the dorm, and then the school is a whole new public hearing process with notifications and everything. So this is just a text change, and then when actual, you know, push comes to shove, this one.
Steve, Steve, did you want to make another comment?
No, I should note though, within the new rewrite, we have changed a recommended language to add increased distance for notifications for applications, so that will come up. And then with this application, when it comes through, as Brian indicated, the direct neighbors and the butters are going to get notified. So there'll be people right on the ground that will know what's going to be happening next door. It's not proliferating it throughout the entire zone. You know, if they had another building they wanted to buy, they've got to come back again and add that building to their campus tech.
Right.
Where do you get the half a spot per? Just the formula there. It looks like you could pull it from somewhere that seemed like a really sensible place, but just curious where you got it from.
I mean, it's going through other, like what other cities have proposed. Yeah.
Do you remember what cities you looked at?
Everyone in Connecticut that has the school.
Gotcha. It seems to be the consensus around half a spot for those that have parking requirements.
Yeah, they vary, you know, down from half a spot up to, yeah, one spot, excuse me, one spot.
Is the school location approved already?
Are you asking me?
Am I muted?
No, I can hear you. I wasn't sure if the question was for me. Sixty-nine Wall Street is confirmed.
So that didn't require any city permits or anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'd have to check to see if there's any permits for the use in the space right now. I'm not positive. If it's internal office space, I'd have to check.
Brian, did we miss someone who wanted to make a public comment?
Yeah, there is someone with their hand up. I will bring them over. Ben.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, great. My name is Ben Handpeter. I live at two six two East Avenue. I just wanted to echo some of the comments from Mike and Galen. I'm a recent college student myself, class of 2020. And I think I had a very similar experience where, you know, my first two years at school, I didn't have a car myself, and I was able to navigate around very, very effectively without it. I think the half-mile distance is a cakewalk. I mean, I went to school in Colorado, CU Boulder. And even when I was living in dorms on campus, yeah, the, that campus is so enormous that you can stay within the campus bounds and walk over a mile. But, you know, we did, we did just fine with that. I think regarding some of the bikeability of the area, it's definitely doable. I bike that area all the time. And, you know, you have the, you know, the parts of the NRBT that'll get you into South Norwalk. So I don't think there's anything that, that students need on a day-to-day basis that they can't get without a car. I think it's great that the students are encouraged to not have cars and that they're not allowed to park them on campus or anything like that to really encourage sort of a, you know, denser walking and cycling-based experience. I think it's great that the city is, is getting the school, and I would support, yeah, passing this motion, I suppose. That's all for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I do want to just pull up the deep referral real quick for you. So as part of this application, we did have to refer to Deep and Harbor. I can't find where it is. If I could just read it into the record from here. So this is from Marcy Ballant. She's the senior coastal planner at Connecticut Deep. And she, and this is in regards to the dormitory regulation. Um, and she, and this is in regards to the dormitory uh, regulation amendment. Uh, she said, Dear Commissioners, thank you for. Boarding the above referenced zone, change referral to the Land and Water Resources Division. Of Connecticut Deep, which we received electronically on April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Our office has reviewed the regulation change for consistency with the goals and policies of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. And finds the proposed changes generally consistent. These comments are made in accordance with Connecticut General Statute twenty-two A dash one oh four E, which requires notification to this office at least thirty-five days prior to the commencement of the hearing thereon. Please contact me if you have any questions. Uh, or any coastal management matter you may have sincerely, Marcy L. Ballant. And Harbor did not um, provide any comments to the contrary of the application.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, any further comments on this? Um? Apparently not. Um, if there are no more uh, comments, um. Uh, can I have a uh, motion?
I'll make the motion, Mike Mearschak, to approve the resolution.
All right, Mike moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Galen seconds. Um, Brian, can you um? Put up the language?
Sure. I think you were going with the revisions proposed by Adam.
Yeah, uh.
Yeah.
That's the, uh, can you hear me? Hold on. Yes, that's the motion I was approving.
Okay.
With modifications.
All right, um, Mike, do you want to uh, suggest those modifications?
Uh, sure. Well, actually, I'll defer to Brian. He can read them off. Easier. Is that all right, Brian?
Yes, so um, the, so the dormitory definition would be um, the one showing here on your screen. Dormitory, a building or buildings containing a number of private or semi-private sleeping quarters to be occupied. By students enrolled at the college or university. With shared facilities such as bathrooms and living rooms owned, controlled, and/or managed by an educational institution that is located within the city of Norwalk. Separate cooking facilities are not provided for each of the sleeping quarters, but common eating facilities and related cooking facilities may be located in the building. And then um, with this is the, the point five parking spaces for dorm room, and then if you guys wanted to. Come up with a reasonable distance, the dorm should be from the classroom space.
I think we should leave that open, to be honest. You know, as Mike points out, like at Columbia University, they have dormitories all over Harlem that are connected with uh. Columbia. Mike talks about the experience with Rutgers. I think if we put a. A, a mile or a half mile right now, that will be.
It seems that we get the thing we want by putting in the, in, in point A, that it's located within the city of Norwalk. That seems to be the meta point of like, you don't want to put a dormitory here for a school in Stanford or. A school somewhere else. I sort of agree with, with Galen on the distance to the school feels very. Pedant, and it just feels a bit off from other regulations in a way that would be overly prescriptive.
I agree.
So, something else to point out on, on that specifically is. If, if the dormitory use is not allowed in that zone, they can't just put it anywhere regardless. You still need to have it allowed in specific zones.
Oh, really? This is only for the east Norwalk Village District as of now, correct? It is what we're amending, correct?
E- East Avenue Village.
East Avenue, sorry.
Well, if it's just for East Avenue, then why don't we simply um, say within a mile of the university?
Well, the problem you can run into though is. What if they get a university, what if they find space not within a mile for performing arts space somewhere else? The dormitory. You know, you're sort of restricting the school where they can open up shop.
I hear what, I hear what you're saying, Nick. Yeah, say they find something further down uh.
Right.
West Avenue or, yeah.
Post road, anything.
Right, I.
Bigger space.
No, I think you're, I think you're right.
I, I think something else to consider too is that, and Brian and I talked about this quite a bit, that. If, if college or university is a permitted use in the zone, I kind of take that to infer that there's going to be people on the campus there. So that, some of those other zones may already allow that as a use, so that, that kind of makes this. This, this is kind of a standalone use for, for locations where they're just putting in the housing, but not the educational component.
Is the educational component is not allowed in the east, in the Village District right now?
It is. So, so this is existing language right here. Yep.
Right.
And then we're adding the, the red text.
Great, right.
Dormitories.
If the consensus is to.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to understand Steve's point then. Are you saying, Steve, that? Um. That the notion of dormitories is sort of the facto expectation if you already have the, the college and university aspect of it?
That, that would be my opinion, but in this case, so the college is not located. On the same site, and it's not, you know, even within the same zone, so.
I, I feel as though we just need to have the first. In the, the highlighted area, just eliminate that and just say including dormitories, because the definition of dormitory. Goes into detail, so we don't have to say including dormitories associated with the universe. You know, it's a redundant, becomes a redundant. Language.
Yeah.
I would agree with you, Mike. Agree with you.
Yeah, I would just, since you already got it highlighted, push delete.
Look at that expertise right there. I love it.
To the comments that Mike made. Um, I don't think this is particularly burdensome. Uh, but I'd uh, like to add that we require at these dormitories um. Um, bicycle racks to accommodate. Up to fifty percent of uh. Uh, of uh, the uh, spaces. Uh, you know, if you're having forty-eight students, then you'd have, uh, you have to provide twenty-four. Uh, bike racks or, or space.
A hundred percent.
Pardon me?
Why don't you just go with a hundred percent? If your notion is, and you're not driving. You can have a bike, miles off.
All right, I, I, I don't, I, I guess I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Look, I, I have to admit here, I have four bicycles, okay? I have one for different kinds of weather.
Mike, you are not going to be committed to attend this university.
So I, well, you never know. I, you know what? I've always wanted to be on stage, and there's no age requirement. Uh, so uh, anyway, the uh, that, no, I. Lou, I think that's a great suggestion, and it's something that I'm sure would have come out of T M P. Uh, a- as well, a- and the Bike Walk Commission, so. Yeah, I would say a, a, a bike, a bike rack, a bike parking facility for uh, each tenant or each resident.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, is everyone else kind of uh, fine with that?
Yes.
I think it's terrific. I, I think it encourages, you know, young people to, to, to take bikes too, instead of just walking, and, and I love that. Personally.
Yeah, and the, and bike lockers are great, but we don't, I don't want to put that burden on.
Yeah, that takes. They take a lot of space.
Yeah, with the mar- the market, you know, I mean, the demand may be there, and they might want, you know, the bikes to be protected from the weather, which is always really nice. Um, but in any case, you know, the larger apartment buildings have. Bike rooms now, uh, and which are really nice, but I, to, you know, to add that into a existing building is not feasible usually. But in any case, uh.
Are there any other language changes uh, suggested? No?
No.
Okay, uh, it, this, uh, everyone's comfortable that this addresses um, um, all the issues that we've just discussed?
Yeah, I guess I would just uh, ask where, do you want the bicycle accommodations to be added into the dormitory definition? Do you want it to be added into um, the, the? East Avenue Village District language after the, the use?
My, my recommendation would be to hold off and put it in, in the special permit application. I think it just make. Putting in the definition really doesn't have anything to do with the definition. It makes more sense to put it as a condition of bad approval.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, there are enough of us to remember that. Uh, so, uh, we have a uh, motion uh, to approve. We have a second. Uh, we ready to vote?
Do we want to ask a question? Can we scroll one second? Sorry, one other thought just crossed my mind. Uh, owning, controlling, managing an educational institution. Do we need to define educational institution in any which way? Do we have that? Do we need something along the lines of accredited university?
Well, it's going to take them, it's going to take them a little time to get a credit.
Accreditor in progress or sign, trying to, if I'm reading Adam's memo comments, um.
We have a definition of college or university in, in the, the regulations now.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Can we bring that up? My only concern, maybe this is a ridiculous thing, is someone playing the game with it. Maybe we don't need to.
Not ridiculous.
Not ridiculous, okay.
It's not ridiculous. You know those lawyers?
No comment.
Yeah, I could see the school of hard knocks suddenly appearing. And uh, oh, we need a dorm too.
Right? Of requiring accreditation too. You're also eliminating the, the, the opportunity for trade schools uh, to open, as many of them are not, uh, don't have to be accredited. Yeah, I just wonder if there's something that, like, that threads the needle of, of accreditation or accreditation equivalent or some sort of. Yeah. I am not, I totally hear what you're saying. I can't be more supportive of getting a school into the city and anything like that. The last thing I want to do is just open up a bachelor's. Oh, thanks, bud. Totally. I, offering to you, Chris. Okay, so this says it's an accredited by state of Board of Connecticut, so by definition, Steve. Would this school not necessarily comply yet because its accreditation is in progress?
Mr. George, how long, how long uh, will it take you to get your state accreditation?
Uh, I can take, right now, processing times are up to a year. Uh, the application has already been received. Uh, so it, it really is in their court. Um, the, the, I will say that this state is um, pretty fantastic. Uh, it is not a pass fail. Uh, they work with you on the application to make sure that it passes where. The state of New York, for example, is if you do the application wrong, you are uh, you're at the beginning again. Um, Connecticut is, is not like that. Uh, they're, they're pretty terrific, and they, they work with you through the process. Um, but they're up to a, a year right now in terms of, of timing.
I've, I've had some experience working with the state on, on licensed facilities. And it seems to me, if I remember this correctly, it's, it's, if I can simplify it, it's two, two segments. One is your curriculum. And, and technical aspects of teachers and licensing and stuff. And then the other one is your actual facility. And I, I, I've never seen one that doesn't require um, a sign off from the zoning department. As to its legality, and then all the rest of them that come with it, like fire inspections and that kind of stuff.
Right.
Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Um. So. I- i- if you don't have a zoning approval yet, you're, you're not like all the way ready with your application then either.
We do for the space, so they, they, they don't actually regulate uh, dormitories.
No, I'm not talking about the dormitory. I'm talking about your school.
Yeah, so our lease, this is, is confirmed at sixty-nine Wall. It's fully executed.
No, but I was talking about your licensing for the school.
Yeah, the li- the licensure.
The approval, the accreditation aspect.
Yeah, yeah, we are not accredited at this, at this time.
No, I know that, but you have an application, you said, right?
We do, yeah. So it's, it's actually, it, it's actually based on the major. Um, so you, you fill it in for each major, so it's, it's three separate licensures for each major that you offer. If we were to add an additional major, we'd have to go back to the Connecticut State Department of Higher Education to fill out an additional licensure for that major.
But don't they want to know where you're located?
Yes.
And, and they've not asked you for a zoning approval for that?
No. Because isn't it, because sixty-nine, where it's located, I think, is all, all within. The way the school itself um, is located, it's, it's all approved, right? So therefore, there's no approval needed. It might come up that in two months, they review a portion of the application and say, hey, give me more information on this, or. I need this document, but it, it is a constant back and forth. Uh, it is not.
You know, my experience has been with motor vehicle licenses, um, liquor control licenses.
Yep.
Hairdressing, salons, and school licenses, and every. Every one of them requires a sign up from the zoning department and the fire department.
Yeah, so I, I've, I've done liquor control uh, a number of times too for, for the conservatory. Um, and yes, that is the case. Uh, and I, I imagine that at some point they'll say, hey, I need A, B, and C. Uh, but we're not.
All right, well, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
But Steve.
And I, and I, I probably shouldn't be asking you all this because the dormitory zone is different, I guess, from. Your school, but you're the one making the application for it, so that's why I'm asking.
No, I, I appreciate it. I understand.
Uh, Steve, um, I, as I see the question, um. Does this qualify as a college or university under that definition? And if it doesn't, does that change what we're discussing here tonight? Because we're only talking about dormitory. You're, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Sorry. Brian, can you pull the um, draft uh, definition language back up, the one, the redlined one?
But Steve, before you do that, let me, can I just ask a threshold question here?
Go ahead.
So we, we're not talking about voting to approve this building. We're talking about voting to. To approve a text amendment.
That's right.
And then. When he gets a school license, then he would be um, or at least underway. Would be authorized to come in, uh, not authorized, qualified to come in. And say, I own this building, or I'm leasing this building, and I want to make it a dormitory. So it's a two, two-step process here then.
Right, yeah. Technically, you couldn't approve the location until you proved the text allowing that use in the zone. That's the first step.
So we're just talking about the generality of the dormitory has nothing to do with Wall Street or. One oh two East Avenue at this juncture.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's a double-edged sword for the applicant, because he could come in and just. Without giving you any information about where his school was located, what his school was, and just say. I want to put a dormitory as an allowed use in this zone, and, but you know, inevitably, you're going to ask, well, what school are you? Where are you located? Uh, what are the impacts? And so they, they have to give you some basic, you know, background information on that.
So Steve, I would say, I. I would defer the comment about the school definition to just take a look at that, but I'm. Happy to move forward with the definition of the dormitory language, because it's sort of. It's different and separate, because we already have the definition of college and university already predefined, so just. If their staff can take a look at that and see if we need to do anything with that at a later date, but.
All right, uh, I think we're ready to vote. Uh, again, let's do this by a roll call. We have a motion to uh, approve and a second. Brian, Steve, you want to do the roll?
Sure, no problem. Um, Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Darius, you're muted.
Is that a yes, Darius?
Yes, yes, I.
Mr. Rowena?
I really like the idea about it, but I'm the most staying.
Mr. Backsendale?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Sounding yes.
Mr. Mearschak?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
I think I got everybody correct.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mr. George, uh, just a um, sort of self-serving suggestion.
Please.
Particularly since uh, your students um, are not uh, uh, going to be allowed to have cars. Um, at the dormitory. You might want to open up a conversation. at the dormitory. You might want to open up a conversation with the Norwalk Transit District about the use of the public bus system to help help them get around town.
That would be terrific. I will do. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, we're ready to move on. Next is an item that doesn't appear on the agenda. But we had a request from Attorney Suchi on twenty twenty one dash ten S P. That's Norwalk Housing Ventures, One Elmcrest Terrace. And I'll invite Attorney Suchi to tell us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, ten fifty five Washington Boulevard in Stamford, and we represent Norwalk Housing Ventures Two LLC. Just about a year ago, we appeared before you and gained your approval for an additional six units to be constructed to the rear of the carriage or cottage house at One Elmcrest Terrace. And that would bring the total number of units at that site to thirty five. We're running right up against the deadline by which we are required to secure a building permit. So we filed a request for an extension of time at the end of April to protect that underlying approval. So far to date, various actions have been undertaken. And the only thing that is remaining is the release of the zoning permit and then the building permit to be issued. We posted two bonds, one in the amount of twenty nine thousand, one in the amount of ten thousand. The certificate of special permit was recorded. The Mylar map of the approved site plan was recorded. And an application for zoning approval was submitted with the requisite plans. And we're just, I think there's just one other item that is waiting finalization and approval by staff. So we asked that you grant the extension of time so that we're able to protect the underlying approval. And it's my estimation that the remaining item will be submitted to staff and then the zoning permit will be released to the building department. And then the building department can issue its permit in short order. Estimated timeframe for construction is about eight, ten to twelve months, once we once we begin site prep work. So if you are have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them. One of the delays is just increased costs and supply chain issues and the like, still the resulting impacts of COVID and also some changes of staff over workforce partners. But other than that, we've done almost everything we need to do to to move this matter forward.
Any questions for Attorney Suchi? If not, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion from Mr. Baxendale. Is there a second? Galen, seconds. Why don't we do this by raising a pair of hands? All those in favor? It looks like it's unanimous, so I won't ask. I won't say anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Scholman.
Sure.
And members of the commission, thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Good night. All right, next, twenty twenty two dash eighteen SPR McDonald's Real Estate Company. Three seventy Connecticut Avenue, modification to SPR for existing McDonald's drive-through. And Ms. Bonenberger, is I pronounced that correctly?
Yeah, Bonenberger. You're pretty close.
Please, go ahead.
Well, hi, my name is Kelly Bonenberger and I am from Bowler Engineering, which is located at sixty five LaSalle Road in West Hartford, Connecticut. And I am here on behalf of McDonald's Real Estate Company for a site plan modification for the addition of a side-by-side drive-through at an existing McDonald's, which is located at seven thirty Connecticut Ave. And if I could share my screen.
Is that address seven thirty or three seventy?
Seven thirty.
Okay, it's incorrect on our information.
So this site is about an acre and is located in the business two zone. And the site contains an existing McDonald's with a parking lot and a single drive-through lane, which has one order point and one menu board. And we are proposing to add an additional order point and menu board in a side-by-side configuration. Now, in front of you is a colorized site plan with north pointing to the top right corner of the page and Connecticut Ave down at the bottom to the south. And you can see that there will be one entrance into the drive-through and then it will split off into two lanes. And then the these like black boxes would be where the menu boards are and the ordering points. And then the lanes would merge back in into one and you would pick up, pay and pick up your food where the windows are currently. Since there was an addition of another drive-through lane, about eight parking spaces have been removed, but the parking regulation requires twenty eight. And we are still proposing thirty four parking spaces on site. All site access is remaining the same. There's a one-way entrance in from Connecticut Ave and then there's an exit point onto Connecticut Ave. And then new pavement striping is being proposed around the site. We're having, we're restriping where the mobile order pickup locations are over on the right just to make them a little more visible for customers and then also restriping to make the pull-forward space for overflow from the drive-through parking spaces more visible as well. But no changes to signage are being proposed and no changes to the exterior of the building are being proposed.
Are you going to have a single pickup point for the two separate the two lanes when they merge?
Yes, so currently, this is where is like the pay window, so where you would like pay for your food. And then the second window is the pickup window where you would like actually get your food. But McDonald's has, this is like a merge point camera, so that helps them keep track of which car is order, which order goes to which car. It takes a picture of the license plate, so then when you merge back into one lane, they know which order goes to which car.
Are are there any other McDonald's that use this same arrangement in the area?
Um, yes, the side-by-side drive-throughs are like McDonald's new program. So I know there's a bunch in New Haven, Stanford, they've been like, that's their whole next steps for the McDonald's chain is to put in these side-by-side drive-throughs. And they've found that it increases the efficiency and also allows for them to have better stacking and queuing at these existing sites.
How how many additional vehicles will will this accommodate at any one time? I know we occasionally see cars on Connecticut Avenue waiting to get into the stack line. This should have some impact on that. But can you estimate what that is?
Yes, so now on the screen is like a stacking exhibit. So on the left, approximately about like nine cars within the limits of the drive-through. So this isn't looking at it going out into Connecticut Ave, but about nine cars can be within the drive-through lane at one time. And then over on the right in the proposed conditions, it increases the queue up to about fifteen. So you get, you will, you would get four additional queuing spaces, but then also having these two order points allows for the cars that are waiting to order. It allows for that time to be more efficient.
I have a question.
Please.
Hi, Mike Moushak here. Are you impacting the deliveries in any way in terms of the size of the truck? Because I can see that now they can maneuver in a big parking lot if they come in the middle of the night, I imagine, you know, with no cars there, but this has been a concern in other similar situations. So has that been worked out? I imagine it is, but I just want to ask.
Yes, they McDonald's typically uses a WB fifty truck to turn through here and we and we ran a truck in our model and the turning radius worked. And they also come in peak hour, off-peak hours. So if the truck would have to go over this line to make more of a clearance, it wouldn't be clipping the canopy that would be over a car for those menu boards. And then they load in the back of this area, so they could pull over to the side in these parallel spaces. Or it would be in those off-peak hours where people typically wouldn't be at the drive-through.
Thanks, and I have one more question.
Go ahead, Mike.
So I use the McDonald's drive-through on the Darien Rest Area, ninety five a lot. There's two windows in front of each other that, I mean, ordering boards or whatever you call them, kiosks. And the one, the first one that you reach is never on. You get this kind of weird recording, you know, please move ahead. And or I think they ask you if you have a coupon or or an app or something. But anyway, it's never actually, you can't ever order there. So is this an improvement on that? And I'm not sure why, maybe those just aren't that busy, even though they're on ninety five. I always sometimes there's a car in front of me ordering and I'm sitting there in front of a of a speaker with the menu board and it's not responding and it has to wait for me to get to the next window. So I I I'm just curious if this is some kind of a new system and why the other one doesn't work or why the other one is never actually utilized.
McDonald's still, we still do design for that type of layout, how you're saying, like the order points. So there would be one here and one kind of like down the line a little bit. It just depends on the size of the lot and if there's enough space to put in these side-by-side drive-throughs. And it's definitely very site-specific if those both the menu boards are being used each time, because I know they look at like their peak hours and how many employees they have in the store to determine if they are going to use those menu boards, but that's definitely a store-by-store case.
Thanks, thank you. And I have to say, the Filet-O-Fish that I get to pass through that window has saved my life more than once, when I'm so so busy, I don't have time to stop and eat. Anyway, I'll just share that. Thanks.
We also provided a traffic letter report, which was prepared by Atlantic Traffic. And in their findings, they concluded that the proposed project is not expected to have any significant negative impact on site parking, onsite circulation, or on traffic flows for the adjacent public roadways. And they also wrote that the proposed replacement of the existing drive-through layout with a side-by-side drive-through is anticipated to accommodate existing drive-through queues, thereby enhancing the site safety and also likely result in reducing existing drive-through queues. And then we also got a comment letter from the traffic department from the city of Norwalk today too, and they just had a few comments about it that we can address in our site plan. They just wanted an additional stop bar to be added when you're exiting the site and for these pavements markings to be reconfigured. So there's a safe the cars are stopping for the pedestrians crossing. And then they just also wanted us to provide the signage for the mobile order points that are already existing and then also for the pull-forward signs, just what that is going to specifically look like.
Other questions? Steve, any staff comments on this?
No, I mean, and just in general, the concept of increasing the queue length and definitely can aid in getting cars off the street and moving them through the process quicker. So that's something that, you know, we encourage.
Okay. Can we do that? I don't recall if we have a resolution on this one or we simply have to.
Yeah, I'll pull it up for you.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I had it.
And Steve, I think I heard this correctly, but both of T N P's suggestions are being incorporated. Is that right?
Yes, we can, we will incorporate those.
Thank you.
Brian, we can get a cheeseburger faster than you can pull up that resolution.
Mike, Mike, enough, enough discussion of junk food.
I know, making you hungry, right?
We're meeting at McDonald's after. Is that what's happening, Lou?
But only in the queue for safety. Okay. Now, Brian, does this require a further sign off from T N P?
No, I think they issued final comments today. DPW has more comments coming, but I don't think that there'll be anything that substantially alters anything. So when it comes time for them to actually do the work, they'll have to go through the whole permit process anyway, and that's when DPW's comments will get incorporated.
Okay, okay. You know that you've lost. There you go. Okay. Can I have a motion on this?
I make the motion to approve, Mike Moushak.
Okay, Mike moves. Is there a second? Darius seconded. Steve, let's do, let's do a roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Baxendale?
Yes.
Mr. Moushak?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
And finally, under review and action on applications, one dash oh five SPR FF Realty LLC Pepperidge Farms, five ninety five Westport Avenue. Request for bond relief, release, report and recommend action.
So I hadn't sent you and you guys anything on this one. But it's Pepperidge Farm at five ninety five Westport Avenue, which was moved back in two thousand and five and construction was completed back in two thousand and nine. Part of that approval, they needed to submit a bond, which they did. Since it's been completed, CEO'd for the last thirteen years. Asking for their bond back.
Can can I have a motion to approve this?
I'm making a motion.
Darius moves second. Richard seconds. Let's do, just do a raise of hands. All those in favor, I approved you, like Galen? I don't know whether it, I don't know whether Galen is for or against or yeah, there's a hand. It's unanimous. Okay.
I just want to say something. I'm so proud to be from the hometown of Goldfish. I mean, think about it. It's quite something.
You know, many, many years ago, I mean, like twenty years ago, they they Pepperidge Farm were big donors to the United Way. And I, they, 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 United Way used to host an awards ceremony for outstanding people. And so every year, the people from Pepperidge Farm would get an award and stand up and tell us the whole story about how, you know, Pepperidge Farm is owned by Campbell's Soup. But Pepperidge Farm itself was actually started by a woman here in Norwalk. And has, unlike many other companies, has remained in Norwalk. Sometime when we have a short meeting, I'll I'll recite for you the twenty-minute history of Pepperidge Farm. Um, sometime when we have a short meeting, I'll, I'll recite for you the, uh, 20-minute, uh, history of Pepperidge Farm.
Well, my dream.
Tomatoes.
Thank, thank you. And, and my, my dream at age 61 is to not only go to a school of performing arts and get a degree in, in, uh, fine arts, but also, which will never happen, and, uh, work for the research facility at Pepperidge Farm and sit around.
McDonald's hamburgers.
Taste cookies all day. That's what they do up there. They, they're testing new cookies.
I went to.
Okay.
I went to find a job at, at General Mills when I lived in Minnesota.
Oh.
They tested baked goods all day. Even in the legal department.
Oh, great.
That's a fulfilling job.
Yeah.
All right. Continued discussion of the zoning regulation rewrite, single-family zoning, accessory dwelling units and parking. Steve, I assume that, that you?
Yes, and I sent out a brief memo yesterday with, um, just kind of a, a draft bulk and height schedule, so you can kind of see the impacts. And in this case, which I don't think really are impacts, I think that the, the proposal that we've kind of, or at least Brian and I's working proposal that we've been, you know, going back and forth with, with the consultants is, just to recap, leave the AAA zoning alone, um, really because AAA is kind of a unique animal i- in terms of how it's regulated with its, uh, density standard as well as the setbacks, the lot area, the lot width, it's different than the other zones. Whereas the A and AA share a lot of the same characteristics aside from, uh, some differences in the rear and side setbacks, but otherwise it's the same. So the draft schedule, which I probably should just pull up instead of talking to it. How's that? Is that?
Almost impossible. Fortunately, I have, I have a hard copy in front of me.
Let me blow it up a little. How's that? Is that a little better?
That's better.
Okay. So this table shows the existing zones and then the proposed bulk and height for combining the zones. Um, again, no real changes with the A, I mean, excuse me, with the AAA. Uh, but one, one of the recommendations the consultant had is that, you know, really the lot area standard's not really a relevant standard where the lot width standard is really what triggers the, you know, the kind of the character and the layout of the area. Um, and if the lot width requirement doesn't change from the existing and you have to have that 150-foot width, you're going to lose the potential for rear lots. So you're going to get a more, um, uniform development pattern over time, even though we're, you know, we're a pretty built city at this point anyway. Um, down below is the proposed, you know, just proposed, and then obviously subject to change. Combined with the A and the AA, as you can see, we kept the, um, kept the same front setbacks, so there's no change there. Both zones have the same lot width, so there's really no, um, impact change there. The side setback, we, you know, just, one thing I, I, I think are, and this is more of a staff issue when they're issuing permits is, you know, when they, we come up with standards where are really kind of make it more difficult to regulate than necessary with, with trying to figure out percents of lots, um, which is really just more work than it is really if, has any effect on anything. So we're recommending having a standard, um, side setback of 10 feet and eliminating a really unnecessary standard, which is the, um, you know, looking at the combined setbacks for both side yards. It's really kind of an outmoded concept. It's just more work and it's unnecessary work for who's ever involved, whether it's the applicant, the homeowner, um, surveyors, architects. It just really, doesn't really have any impact on anything. It's just kind of unnecessary. So that's kind of how we propose to lay that out. And lastly would be, um, looking at the, the B and the, uh, C zone and how those two would interact with the idea being that right now, just as a refresher, the B residence zone is strictly single-family currently. It's the smallest lot size for single-family with a minimum lot area of 6,250 square feet. Whereas the C residence zone, which has almost identical size requirements, but if you have a lot that's 6,000 square feet, you can do a two-family. So, you know, one of the ideas would be to eliminate the B residence zone with areas within the B zone, depending on where you are in the city, going into the new A double-A zone. And then, oh, the other portions going into the new, um, combined BC zone, which would allow for two families. And we did put a caveat in there that if your lot width is 60 feet, you can get that two-family. Whereas if you only have 50 feet, you're unable to get that two-family. You have to, you know, maintain the one-family. Um, setbacks are similar, actually identical, I should say, between the two zones existing. So there's really no visual impact that you would see, no, no major changes that way. Um, and the last thing I'll touch on, and I know I'm going pretty quick, is that we understand that if the B-zone properties go, um, upzoned to the A double-A zone, that those setbacks are, are likely to be more impacted. So we've, we've added a clause that, you know, i- if your prop, if your house's or structure is, um, you know, legally built as the date of this, um, you know, change to the zoning, that you can use the B-zone setbacks as opposed to the A double-A. So that way we don't end up with a rash of variance applications and a ton of non-conforming properties, which is really not the goal. It's just to, over time, slowly start to get, um, more conformity with these zones and as well as have a much more simpler, um, zoning scheme and zoning map. So when you're looking at the map, it's not just a patchwork of different single-family zones that were just kind of laid out in a very haphazard manner. That's kind of just picking up on what we talked about last month. Um, and I know Brian also had some, uh, further language he developed on the ADUs, but I'm happy to take any questions anybody has pertaining to the memo I sent out or the chart that's up on the screen now.
Steve, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that, um, I fully understand how you allow a B residence zone to become an A double-A resident zone.
So the, those parts, so, you know, the, the B-zone is kind of, as I mentioned, the lowest density or, excuse me, smallest lot area of the single-family zones. And it's kind of, if you think of a zoning scheme, you start out with your, you know, your urban core area. Then you start to branch out with a little desk, little, less density and then less dense and then less dense. And then you get out to like your AAA area. So the B-zone is kind of like a more of an inner core, but not a, a higher density area. So it is a, a single-family house or a single-family structure on a smaller lot. Um, many of these areas, you know, they're, they're conducive to going towards a two-family environment, which is why we kind of recommend combining some of the B-zone properties with the C. But in the other instance you just mentioned, those properties would go to the new A double-A zone. So at the end of the day, we've eliminated a couple of the, uh, single-family zones. We end up really with two single-family zones and then a two-family zone. So the properties that were in the B-zone that get upzoned, they end up having, um, you know, they're, they're facing more stringent setbacks than they would be right now. So the idea is that to put this clause in there to protect them from having to deal with the idea of non-conformities and/or having to go get variances every time they want to do something to their house.
Well, um, but, I mean, are you saying that a house on a 6,250 square foot lot um, can be considered A double-A? I mean, a double-A zone is three times the square footage.
Right, so.
I can't imagine that people living in double-A are going to be happy about that.
It, it doesn't impact anybody in the A double-A whatsoever. So how it would work is, again, if you can see on column C, that's the minimum lot area. So we're not going to be eliminating, we're not going to be regulating the lot area, just regulating the lot width. So if you're in a B-zone property now and the ch- the change to the zoning goes forward, you can, um, you can still build to the B-zone setback. So you're not subject to the new rules. But if somebody was going to, say, subdivide a property there or they tear a house down, then they're going to need to conform to the new rules. But if you wanted to put on, uh, you know, exchange your kitchen and then the setback is 10 feet, but your structure's built to six, you don't have to adhere to that 10-foot. You can adhere to the six. Hopefully that made some sense.
I understand it. I don't know if I support it, but I understand it.
What's your concern, Lou?
Uh, you know, uh, I, I'm not entirely sure, um, Nick. I'm, you know, I, I, I only just realized this, uh, now as Steve was making the presentation. I'd need some time to think about it. And fortunately, we're not voting tonight. That's.
Right. Steve, do you have a sense of where, like where the B and C are going to change?
Yeah, Brian and I have kind of kicked that around a little bit and are still thinking it through. I, I don't want to get into the specific locations because I think that would just take the conversation in a completely different direction. I think that's all we would focus on. And then people would start thinking about that. I, I, where, where the lines get drawn is probably the, the last step, really. It's if, if the scheme makes more sense, then, um, then we could go, you know, deal with the, the areas for the, you know, B versus C versus A at a different date.
Other question about this?
Uh, I do, Mike, Mike Mearschek? With, did, did I, anybody else start? Did I speak over anybody?
No.
Okay, sorry. Uh, so the two-family in the combined BC zone, uh, it would, it would open up the B-zone to two-family conversions, which is a good thing on many levels, right? Would encourages more housing and, uh, monetizing people's properties, uh, create more affordable housing. Uh, the parking, uh, but the, the two-family parking requirement would still be the same, whether it was B or C. Is that correct?
Right. So if you're doing a two-family, you'd need four spaces.
And have we looked at how many potential two-family conversions might, uh, be, I guess, encouraged or allowed by this? Not, not everybody would do it, of course. But, uh, there's, and, and it all depends on where those lines are drawn. Uh, I guess is that, to reiterate you, we're going to draw those distinctions based on, uh, proximity to transit?
Yeah, that's one of the criteria. Yeah. So i- obviously if you're closer to like a main artery, um, thoroughfare or in transit infrastructure location, those are all key factors.
And this isn't going to mean an automatic, uh, you know, can, uh, conversion to a two-family, uh, because they have to apply, they have to comply with, um, uh, the, the four, the extra two parking spaces, which is actually quite a burden, um, as I know. Uh, but, uh, al- also, a lot of houses just don't lend themselves to two-family conversions because you'd have to, you know, double the size of the house, basically. A lot of these houses are very small in the, uh, in the B-zone. Uh, I'm just kind of, I'm, you know what it is? I'm just, uh, I'm sharing my thoughts, that's all. I'm not asking.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's there. That's the, that's the kind of, when you, when you think about it, they, they, it's not that. Yeah. So for one, if they, uh, has its proposed on, on the screen, if they don't have 60-foot a lot width, it's, it's a moot point. If, so they can't even go that route. Um, then even, but if they'd say they did have the 60 feet, they would still need to, you know, obviously, um, modify the structure, build a new structure. They've got to provide the floor parking spaces. They have to go through all those steps. So it's not just, oh, I can go ahead and do that. And then Brian will jump into the ADU language after, but one of the things we were proposing was not allowing the ADU in, in this, um, two-family zone. So you can do a two-family there, but you can't do the ADU in that zone. So what the ADUs would be allowed in, um, the double-A, A-zone as well as the AAA zone.
And that, um, just to, uh, refresh my memory, the ADU, was that limited to a third, like 30% or something of the, uh, main unit, main, main dwelling unit? Wasn't there a percentage maximum that could be?
Yeah, the, um, existing, well, the state language says 30, 30% or 1,000 square feet, which is ever is less. But, um, I think we were looking at 700 as being the maximum or 30% whichever is less.
Got it. And, um, so by limiting the AD, okay, so a lot of those houses are so small in B that it would be difficult to put an ADU in anyways. Is that correct? I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm.
Do we?
Trying to wrap my, trying to just try to wrap my head around.
Go ahead, Derek.
Do we want to pull up the current zoning map?
Um, I, my, it's your call. My preference is to really not have that conversation yet. Just because I think that.
Have it all, yeah.
Yeah. That, that gets really, could get complicated.
Nonetheless, let's make sure that we do have that conversation.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yeah, we will, uh, we, we can do that. Uh, yeah, we can discuss timing on when you'd like to do that.
Any more questions about this before Brian chimes in? Okay, Brian?
All right. So I'll just pull up, um, a quick memo I did for ADUs, which seemed like the direction that we were heading with last week.
And, and I don't know, did, did everybody get Tammy's, um, get a look at Tammy's, sent out some, um, pictures and?
Yeah.
Just for some houses.
Right. Thousand, thousand-foot or less houses.
Yeah. Um, so I think.
Brian, can you make that just a bit larger?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we're thinking about opting out of the state legislation and simultaneously proposing our own.
Hmm.
Um, uh, one of the things was to continue approving ADUs how we do today, which is administratively over the counter. Um, we wanted to allow attached and detached ADUs in all of the single-family residential zones. Um, establish a reasonable maximum height for ADUs. Um, I think we were going with the 700 square feet, which is currently the max. I think we wanted to stick with that or the 30% of the gross floor area. Um, I was just doing quick calculations. Um, so essentially if you have a 2,400 square foot house, that's kind of the, the cutoff of where you'd use the 700 or the 30%. Um, if you have a 2,400 square foot house, you'd use the 30% and anything less than that, you'd get this, the 700, I think I'm saying that right. Um, and then, um, setbacks for a detached structure, um, would be the same as accessory, other accessory, um, alright. Setbacks for an accessory apartment would be the same as other accessory structures such as a detached garage. Um, that kind of makes sense because if you have a detached garage currently, that's, you know, 10 feet off your property line, um, you can build your, your apartment over that. Um, continue to require the one additional parking space. And then, um, we're going to no longer require the minimum lot dimensions uh, that are currently, right? So we have, uh, you know, right now in the B-zone, you need to have additional lot area. Um, we were going to go away from any sort of additional needs like that. Um, and also if you were lacking frontage or anything like that, we would technically tell you, you can't have an ADU. Um, I don't really see the purpose in that. If you have 90 feet of frontage, I don't see why you can't also have an accessory apartment. So, um, I kind of took what we have with our existing regulations and just made some quick modifications to it to kind of see what the regulations could look like. So everything that's crossed out is what's in the text today, and that would be considered pulling out red text is what could be in the text if you agreed with it. Um, obviously with B up here, if, you know, with the rezoning and if, you know, A and double-A get combined, then that would be its new zone. And then if B becomes a two-family. If B becomes a two family zone, then that would get removed. So just some clarification language, um, accessory apartments would be permitted within or detached from your single family dwelling. Um, we're sticking with the owner, um, residing on the premises. I think we could, we could talk about that more, but I think it would be good. I think it's good to keep it in. You know, absentee landlordism, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, um, I could see people purchasing a property. Um, constructing an ADU and then moving to Florida and renting out both units. Um, I don't know if that's a problem or not, but. Just a concern.
Why is that bad, Brian?
Um, I mean, I think it kind of takes away from the the concept of, uh, that this. Acts as sort of a passive income for a homeowner. Um, it's a way to, you know, monetize your own property instead of. You know, somebody renting it out and now collecting two checks who. You know, doesn't live in Norwalk.
It still does provide additional house.
Which, yeah, yeah, so it would be, yeah, it would just be. Two rental units instead of an owner, a known unit and a rental unit.
I I will just say that, uh. In our neighborhood, we have a big absentee landlord problem. The properties with the owner living on the premises are better maintained in general, not always, but in general. And the, uh, most of the substandard. Housing that is in our neighborhood is in absentee landlord, uh, buildings. And that means unsafe. Or, uh, in some state of blight. Uh, and, uh, that is, uh. Sad because, you know, the, a lot of these are low, lower income. Uh, residents and they should be. Uh, oh, they should be. Allowed to live in a place that is well maintained is kind of what I'm trying to say. The, uh, that a lot of the absentee landlords that we know of from years and years of experience. Often live in Florida or in some really big home in New Canaan or somewhere. And have a multiple, uh, homes, uh, in our neighborhood. In South Norwalk. And never visit them, uh, and their trash is all over the front lawn and I mean, they're they're not maintained, uh, and so I'm, I would support. Uh, this, uh, owner of the property must reside on the premises. Despite what Galen said about it encouraging more housing. Uh, we have to think of quality of life for the neighbors and what, uh, what we like to call, uh. The phrase that we use in our neighborhood is neighborhood stability. And then, uh, and we've worked hard for twenty years that I've been here to to build up neighborhood stability. And that's often with owner occupiers who start, you know. There's basically more eyes on the neighborhood, uh, and it's made a big change. Anyway, that's, I'll stop at that.
I I I agree with with Mike and with Brian's suggestion that it be owner occupied. In in terms of what it's going to add, uh, to, uh. Uh, the housing market, I, uh. It's, 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 I don't think it's going to enlarge the housing market in Norwalk all that significantly. However. Um, it will provide perhaps some of that missing. Middle housing that we're looking for. Um, so I I think it's valuable from that perspective. I'm not, I'm not, I I I certainly would prefer. Uh, that the the housing be, uh, integrated into the existing structure. Uh, rather than freestanding, um. I'm, um. Um, a little bit concerned about, um. People, people providing, um. Really unattractive. Uh, free, freestanding, uh, units, uh, you know, things that might meet, uh, the building regs. Uh, you know, like a butler building, but, uh, that certainly won't, uh, will detract, uh, from, um, the neighborhood.
I I have a question for Steve. How does this affect the concept of the ADU in the industrial zones? We thought of artisan buildings, basically. Could they monetize them with a accommodation above? The odds are those buildings are not necessarily owned by the people actually on them. There's lease buildings, rental business, buildings, et cetera, but we did want to encourage. The concept of ADU with artists and, uh, workshops, et cetera.
Yeah, this would be. Go ahead, sorry. Yeah, so this would be specific to the residential zone, so it wouldn't have any impact on that.
True, thank you.
Very good question, Brian, actually. Thank you for asking this.
All right, next, um. I just kind of, this kind of standard language of just that you, if you're gonna put one in and if you're on public. Public water, public sewer that you would require WPCA approval or Water Department approval. And if you're on private, uh, water receptacle that you would get Health Department approval. Um, maximum height, I think this is something that we can discuss further. Um, I threw twenty six feet out there. Um, it's, that's. Uh, if you, if you're building a freestanding garage right now, the max height you can do is fifteen feet measured to the midpoint of the roof line. And if you're building a house in most zones, the maximum height's thirty five feet. Um, so it's kind of giving you, uh, in between there. Um, something to consider maybe is, um. If you're building it over an existing garage, it can be twenty six feet high, but if it's a freestanding on its own structure, it has to. Comply with the fifteen feet high accessory structure, uh. Standard that we have now. I'm just throwing that out there.
See what you said. I I think that's a great idea.
All right, so I can make that adjustment, um.
Well, that was just me, but. I don't speak for the commission, but I think that's a great suggestion from staff. Let's put it that way.
I mean, I'm not hearing anybody else objecting to freestanding, um. Am I hearing correctly?
Researching the type of freestanding.
Anyone else?
I'm not a fan of of freestanding either. Um, but. If that was the direction, um, that the commission was going in. I had a couple of. Suggestions that I wanted to make. Um, I think that an accessory apartment. Within an existing building should be over the counter. But if there is going to be a freestanding building, it should require a hearing before. The Planning and Zoning Commission with a view towards parking and, um. I I haven't thought the word out yet, but I'm thinking architectural review. Because I mean, I could just see. A storage container being moved onto a property and and, you know, a couple of bedrooms and a kitchen put in it. And I I just don't think that's as Mike was talking about being fair to the neighbors. I don't think it's fair to the neighbors. If there is going to be. A freestanding, um, structure built, it should bear some resemblance to the building that's on the. On the property and or the neighborhood. And I also feel, um. That there should be two parking spaces. Off street for a freestanding building. And, um, and then I had a question, I wondered. Would this regulation allow somebody to convert a garage into a, into a freestanding? Apartment or is the thought that there would be an apartment over the top? Of a garage?
So this wouldn't stop you from converting your garage into an apartment? Uh, assuming that you could continue to provide the parking behind the front setback, all the, you know, those off street parking for the house and for the. The apartment. And then it complies with size.
Go ahead.
Somebody would have to come in for a permit and say, I want to convert the garage, but then they would have to show. Either two or four parking spaces, depending on how this goes behind the setback line.
Right.
JJ?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, apologize for my lateness. I was attending the rally at city at, um. The the green for the victims at Buffalo. So, um, my question is for Richard, um, you raised a really good point, but I just need some more clarity on your stipulation of off street parking. Is this, um, based upon the, um, the occupants of the freestanding unit or this is just based upon? Um, the the footage of the, uh, based upon acreage?
My, my thought was that, um, a seven hundred square foot outbuilding. Is certainly more than a tiny house like you see on TV. It's a, it's a good sized apartment. And I I just believe. That in most cases, there's going to be two people living there with two cars, which if there's no off street parking provided, then. One's going to be in the driveway and the other one's going to be in the street. And, um, you know, I just don't think, again, like I I use Michael's term that, what did you say that was? With support in the neighborhood or something?
Uh, neighborhood stability.
Neighborhood stability. I don't think it's good for neighborhood stability. To have all all those extra cars that are parked. Is it especially like in the B zones? Most of those houses, um, only have one car garages already. So if the people have two cars, one's in the driveway, the other one's in the street, or maybe they tandem park up. But they're certainly not going to be able to get a third space in.
But this would be a maximum stipulation?
Well, that's, it would be a minimum as far as I'm concerned.
Minimum. So a a a minimum of two off street parking. Um, per ADU.
Yes. Oh, there you are. You're at the top. I'm trying to look at you while you're speaking.
Hi.
Everybody keeps moving on my screen.
You you said, Richard, for a freestanding. ADU, you wanted two parking spaces, not necessarily for something which is just built in the current premises.
But normally, in 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 my experience, people that do the, um, you know, so called in-law apartment. There there usually is only one person living in somebody else's house.
Yes.
Um, so, you know, I I wasn't so, um, concerned about that because it's just not so obvious and not so big and not so. Um, freestanding. I mean, if you've got a freestanding unit, the people feel like it's their house, you know?
But that's what point you make is to, you're what you suggested was by for freestanding ADU, not to do with the ADUs built into a. Yes. Exactly. Sorry, so clarify the point, that's all.
Well, I just think it's important for us to keep in mind. That one of the purposes of the state passing this law that we're opting out of is to provide additional housing. And one of the things that Norwalk sorely needs is additional housing and particularly housing in the middle. And that freestanding. Units and we could put maybe some standards for how they have to look, but it can't be a storage container, it can't be a trailer. Our way to provide housing for young people. Get help for older, you know, I mean, there are all kinds of good things that could possibly be said about that. You know.
I'm not saying, Galen, that I I. That I think it's a bad idea. Um, I just think that. When when people buy a home. They're in, they're entitled to rely on, uh, neighborhood stability. That's a good one. I like it. Um, and and that things are going to be as they were when they bought it. You know, I I I, in my. Experience, I bought a house where I live right now. I knew that there was a church across the street from me that has an annual. Four day fair. I knew there was an eighteen thousand square foot building that was going to have a community center and and. Uh, Greek school for the kids. I didn't know that it was going to have a hundred student daycare center with fifteen support staff. But, you know, that's what it is, but I think that people are entitled to be able to rely on what it is that they bought. And all of a sudden doubling the the housing on each lot is, um. A surprise. Not everybody's going to do it and not everybody's going to like it.
Well, I don't think people, everybody's going to do it, number one.
I agree. I don't think everybody's going to do it. Do do it are going to be straining the, uh, resources of the neighborhood.
But when you buy a house, you don't. If if you want to be able to rely on what the neighbor, the neighbor's property is. You have to buy the neighbor's property.
You know, I I can complain about how somebody cuts their grass or or mows their or rakes their leaves. But building and being able to build another house. On the lot is not, you know, what people bought into. If they bought into a single family, never.
Right, but where I live, I bought into a place where there were woods across the street from me, woods to the side of me. Uh, you know, it was really sort of had a country feel. But now it doesn't because those lots have been sold. And an extraordinarily ugly house is being built. You know, two doors down from me. I mean, I, you know, extraordinarily ugly house. Uh, but that's. Life, you know, I don't control that property.
And that what's being built there is what you knew. Could be built. When you bought, you didn't expect to see two houses on that lot across the street. Well, maybe now you will.
Actually, the neighbor, uh, subdivided to the, a bigger lot, and so now there are two houses.
Well, yeah, but they're each on one lot.
Let's, why don't we, why don't we move on from this? Steve, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I just, I think, um. With the, 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 the regu, the new regulations might be able to address the aesthetic issue too. You might be able to, um.
Exactly.
Ha- have that kind of like. If if somebody does go the road, uh, route of detached, you can kind of dictate what that could look like in terms of the style of architecture. I think that's. That's a fair assumption to make, um. Brian, I was questioning, so. And this kind of could lead to, you know, I know you're talking amongst yourselves is what you're, what you think. Would be appropriate, um. Do we need to hold a hearing on the opt out? Before we refer it out to council?
Yes, so Planning and Zoning needs to affirmatively opt out. But through a public hearing before we send it to council for them to hold a hearing to affirmatively opt out.
Okay, so we need to get that action plus. Have our proposed. Zoning, how we want to. See it go forward at the same time. So. That way, we're, we're not just saying we're opting out, but we don't have a path to to deal with this issue.
JJ's had her hand raised for a while.
Oh, oh, no, I I already spoke, thank you.
Oh, okay. Put your hand down.
Um, other than that.
Thank you.
I have a quick comment to make, Mi- uh, Mike Mearscheck here. The. Uh, intent of the state law was to provide a more affordable housing. As well as more housing in general, but, uh. You, parking spots cost a lot of money, right? So so. By requiring two, and I'm playing devil's advocate here for Richard's argument. Uh, because you make good points, um. And I I think that's actually a really big concern is suddenly a lot more cars in the neighborhood. The, it doesn't make sense to do one and a half spaces and when you're talking about one unit. Because nobody's going to ever build one and a half spaces, right? It's either has to be one or two, has to be a whole number. Uh, you know, it's different with multi-family where you can add the one and a halves altogether and then you end up with three or three and a half. I'm not sure whether you, I think you round. Down, I'm not sure exactly with the, how you guys deal with that, but, uh, but are you round up, right? So, uh, in this case. Staying one and a half is pointless, right? Because it's only one. ADU and where nobody's ever going to build one and a half space. Is that for your bicycles? I mean, that's kind of dumb. But the, uh, the one, the one, the two space requirement. Does add a huge expense in some situations, uh, to. Building, uh, the ADU. And it that, does that counteract the intent?
That's my concern, Mike, as well.
Yeah, it, uh, it, you know, it's, I I don't want to limit. A good thing here, but. Uh, I, it's a balancing act. All of this is, and the conversation is really good tonight in terms of. These issues because they're, they're, they're the on the street, they're, they're what people will experience, you know, right? Right next door, uh.
You need to keep in mind that if if someone is is building either a freestanding or building it into their own home. That, uh, they're doing this to make money. And these. And these may not, uh, be inexpensive places. These may be places, uh, that, uh, demand, um, rents, um, rather, rather like, uh, the, the newer apartments that are being built. I mean, I, or, or maybe somewhat lower because it may not offer all the amenities, but, um, I think we're fooling ourselves if we think that these are only going to provide, uh, mid-cost, uh, housing. Uh, you know, a 700, what's a 700-foot apartment to rent? It could be $2,000 or more. Um, so I, I think we have to sort of keep that in the back of our minds as well.
That, yeah, and I would, I would just argue that yes, indeed, there, there would be a monetary incentive for a lot of people. But, uh, let's not forget it's, it's the, it's the family, young family that needs a, a live-in nanny or a, uh, I guess that's a considered, uh, a luxury for many, but, uh, uh, for someone elderly or disabled, it would be for a live-in, uh, care. Uh, and that situation actually is a lot more common than you think. I brought it up at the last meeting that, you know, the, as the baby boom generation ages, uh, as, as I am experiencing. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm dealing with elderly parents or have in the last few years, uh, you know, who, who decline and then pass on. But a lot of people are in the same situation I am where they would love to bring, I would have loved to have brought my dad to Norwalk to live in, in an ADU in the back backyard. It would have been perfect. Instead of me driving two hours to where he, you know, he was living in New Jersey in the house we grew up in, which was a challenge. It was difficult. He wanted to stay there, but I mean, I, I couldn't, I, I didn't have the money to buy a house for my dad as some people do. And I know people that are doing it or their mom or their, you know, their sibling or whatever. Uh, so I, I, I think that that, to say it's just a way to make money is, is unfair to all, to the people that are, uh, who, who would utilize this, uh, change for creative housing solutions for their own, their own, uh, domestic lifestyle, I guess.
Plus Lou, a, an ADU in a, in a suburban area of Norwalk is never going to be as attractive as an apartment in the urban area and would certainly not attract the same people. You know, if you look at the rents in two-family houses, or my daughter had a house in, actually, uh, actually in East Norwalk that she bought. My grandson lives in the bottom and there was an apartment to rent above. It was a two-family house. Uh, but she could never have rented that for more than $1,500. You know, a small one-bedroom in a, in a two-family house, it would be the same thing with an ADU. I mean, I think it being a high-rent situation is really very, very extraordinarily unlikely. And I'm sort of getting worried about us opting out now, frankly, because I'm afraid we're going to opt out and then we're going to come up with all kinds of reasons why you really basically can't have ADUs. But that's just my fear here.
We already do allow them. So I mean, we, we don't allow the detached units at present, but we do allow ADUs. And we've had that regulation on the books for a long time.
And Steve, what was the, uh, reason, uh, that we didn't allow detached units?
Uh, they, it just never, I, I, my understanding, we're talking with prior staff was that, um, it was broached a couple of times and it was just not well received. So, I mean, I think when you guys have your opt-out hearing, you know, you're not having a hearing on adoption on the new regs, but I think it would be good to have that public discussion at the same time, just to get feedback on what people are going to think. I, I imagine you're going to get, you're going to get both sides of the argument again, and from the broader public too.
Um, um, please, please provide some additional clarity. I, I felt that opting out of the language that was stipulated by the ADU guidelines was giving it a chance to play out. And this way we can see how it's tested. And we can make those changes, make those tweaks around the edges. If, if we're opting out to a hard exit, meaning that we do not accept anything that is being put on the table and we want to challenge it, then that is where I feel that more argument intention is going to really, you know, um, drag this out. I mean, but please clear this up for me if I came to the wrong conclusion about opting out.
Yes, I mean, if, if you opt in, um, you cannot go back and change, make anything stricter than what is permitted to the statute. So if you were to opt out and then just adopt it all as your own language, then you could go back and make changes if any issues arise.
Right. Make those changes around the edges.
Right. And I think what we, I mean, what we, what's written here is, is kind of changes on the edges. It's changes just really to the height and then the maximum square footage that it could be. It's, it's lowering the height from what the statute technically allows, which is the same as a single-family house from 35 down to what we would propose. And then, um, going from the maximum square, square footage of 30% of the floor area of the house or 1,000 square feet to 30% of the house or 700 square feet. So these changes I think are, are considered kind of like those edge changes. Um, but I, I think.
Do you feel that we're, we're locking ourselves out of decision process?
I, what I'm afraid of is that what, what Brian has here are, are tweaks around the edges. But what Lou and Richard are talking about is not having freestanding ADUs. They don't like them, basically. And so that worries me because I don't have an objection to tweaks around the edges, but I think that it's a mistake. I think that, that there are many really important reasons why freestanding ADU should be allowed. I agree with Mike Newshick. My own experience indicates that it's very unlikely to be money-making. Um, I think we can put standards in for how they'll look so that they're not containers, containers or trailers. But
I think this is worrying for.
This discussion is going, that's all.
Right. I mean, I, 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 I love a robust debate about this. I like the ideas that come out of it. So I'm, you know, I, I, I still stand by the, the route of opting out and seeing, you know, how this is going to play out. So this way we can make these changes according to, you know, what fits for our residents.
Steve, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I think, just, I would think from a political standpoint, and I know you're, you're an appointed body, not a political body by any stretch of the imagination. But I would think if we didn't take some action on this in terms of, you know, because what happened, you know, 90% of the public is not in tune with, with, what legislation is passed, especially about something like ADUs, they probably just have no idea. So if, if we just ignore that and then just let the legislation come to pass, and then it was something that happened as of right, and these units just started popping up in people's yards and then a neighbor calls and says, how, how are they doing this? And we'll say, well, it's the law. And then someone starts doing some research, research and says, well, why didn't you guys do anything about this? Then the, you know, the, I can imagine the phone calls are going to be coming in saying, why did you guys ignore this? Why didn't you take any action? Why weren't we allowed to have a voice on this? I think at the very least, you have to have the public discussion.
Steve, I, I, I don't think anyone here, uh, is, uh, advocating for, um, uh, opting in. I think we all agree that we need to opt out. What we're talking about is, um, the, uh, uh, specific changes that some of us would like to see. And, um, I, you know, that, that's fine. As JJ said, you know, it's a robust discussion. I think, uh, that's fine. We ought to hear, uh, the opinion of, of all the commission members.
May I ask you a question?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Brian.
No, I mean, in my opinion is very clearly that we need to opt out. Um, I think we're talking about some of the words in the ship. I'm very much for detached, um, places like Pine Hill. Um, they have large properties, often three acres. They have a, a pool house at the bottom, which they may want to add to. They have, uh, basically servants quarters as they used to be, which now are probably a little down, uh, rundown little, but could easily be moved into a, a very pleasant apartment. But I like the idea. We should have architectural controls, as Richard suggested, over those individual separate ADUs. Thank you.
And I, I'd like to, uh, say, Brian, uh, Staff Brian, uh, not Brian Baxton, uh, uh, Brian Baker, can you possibly look up parking requirements, uh, let's say Minneapolis that got rid of all their single-family zones, you know, a few years ago, uh, and, and see what impact, basically what, uh, effects or impacts there may have been in reducing parking requirements for ADUs, uh, if that's possible to get your hands on. Uh, I, I do, I do think the one space is, uh, is sensible. Uh, but I am also, uh, sensitive to the point Richard brought up, uh, in that two spaces are often going to be needed for an ADU. Uh, so, uh, and then what happens with the overflow parking, you know, it ends up on the street, uh, or, uh, you know, whatever. So that, or on the front lawn. Um, but, uh, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't have an answer about that. It was just that to concern as a homeowner in a neighborhood that has these issues already. Uh, so, uh, but the other thing that, the height is, is good. I mean, in, in general, I'm 90% of this text I, I see as, uh, as something I could vote on and pass, uh, uh, right now. It's, and the one space as a state is this, with the one space for ADU is a state, is the state regulation, isn't that correct?
Correct. Yeah, one space.
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely for opting out and I'm definitely for adopting language at the same time, which is what you're doing here, uh, so that it doesn't look like we're just opting out of, you know, what is, uh, the intent to increase housing and more affordable housing.
Steve, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm done. I'm done. I'm, I'm all right.
Okay. Just, just to really, not to belabor any of the discussion, but we should keep in mind to the both, to Richard and Mike's point about the, um, parking. The, there should, you might have scenarios where the existing house doesn't have enough parking. They may have only one legal space. We, I think you'd need to make sure they had, at a minimum, already have two legal spaces and that have it, definitely no less than three, if you're doing a detached.
Uh, that's a good suggestion.
Okay. Uh, anything else either from Brian or the, uh, commission members? All right. If not, let's move on, on the agenda. We have all of those promised minutes to approve. We're going to have to do this, I think, uh, if you will, minute by minute. Uh, because not, not every member was at every meeting. So, uh, I need you to abstain if you weren't at one of these, um, uh, meetings. Um, approval of the minutes of April 7th. Uh, is there a motion to approve? JJ moves. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Uh, Galen and Richard, I think, seconded. Uh, any changes, revisions to the minutes?
I abstain. I believe I wasn't at that meeting and I'm not mentioned.
Oh, okay. Thank, thank you, Darius.
I abstained as well. I was at the meeting.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Uh, one, two, three, four, five, uh, and two extensions. Uh, moving on, uh, April 20th, motion to approve the minutes. Richard, uh, makes the motions. There are second. And Darius seconds. Um, any revisions, um, changes to the minutes? All right. If not, uh, all those in favor?
All right. All right.
Um, okay.
A little abstaining, Nick.
All right. And, uh, Nick is abstaining. Uh, all right. And finally, um, the minutes of, uh, May 12th are meeting, uh, last week. Um, can I have a motion? Darius moves. Richard seconds. Um, any changes to the minutes? All right. If not, all those in favor?
All right.
Uh, any extensions? Okay. So everybody was, uh, at that meeting last week. Terrific. Thank you very much for that. Uh, comments of the director?
Um, just, we have our next meeting is June 2nd. That will be the public hearing for BLT's North Seven project. Uh, we also have one, I think there probably another South Norwalk project with, I think through Board of Ed, I think, is going to be on that agenda. Um, and I'm trying to think what else is coming down the line. So that's, that'll be a pretty big application. So, and Brian and I will circle back, maybe have, um, for you guys to look at a little more clarity on the ADU situation as well as the opt-out language. And if you're comfortable with that, we can then go ahead and schedule the hearing for the opt-out piece meeting on the council.
When does that have to be done, Stephen?
Brian said January, the effective date of the new regulations?
Yeah, you need to have opted out at the Planning and Zoning Commission and Council needs to opt out before December 31st.
So who goes first? We do then?
Right.
Yeah. So I think, I, I, I mean, if things timed out well, you guys would do your opt-out hearing, forward it to council, they would take their action. Um, and then i- if it lines up well, then the new regulations would be the overall, I'm saying new regulations, I mean, the overall zoning rewrite would be done by the end of the calendar year. And then this new legislation on the ADUs would, would fold right into that.
Okay. So all we'll be acting on initially is opting out. Um, why can't we do that at our next meeting? Or do we have to have a public hearing?
We have to do a hearing and I want to have the language clarified. So I think we might have to wait to your second June meeting.
Okay.
And if you wanted to move on, then, then if you wanted to move on the new ADU language earlier, that say council took action in July or August, for example, if you wanted to put something into effect in September, we could go through that process earlier, if you would like to do.
Okay. Well, let's take a look at what our calendar looks like.
If we wanted to make individual input to you, let's say, on, um, on the new language, are, are we allowed to do that? Like when you send it out or does it have to be talked about that at the public hearing?
Uh, on the opt-out or the new, so the new, like, the language Brian had with the 700 square feet and the height and all that?
Let's just say that I, I looked at Brian's language like I did the other day. And I thought that there should be some stuff. So instead of waiting like I did tonight, would I be able to say to Brian, I think this?
Yeah, that's fine. I think we couldn't propose it formally unless it got the blessing of the full commission though.
No, I, I just, I just meant input. I didn't mean that.
Yeah.
I expected you to.
That's always welcome. Definitely.
And then, and then a follow-up question on that. If I did send that to you, am I allowed to CC everybody or is that a meeting or something?
Yeah, better to send it to us and then we forward it out.
Very technical, these rules.
Someone's always watching, Mr. Brian.
I know.
Anything else, Steve?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, comments of the commissioners? Any comments?
Yeah. I have one.
Mike?
I just want to thank Diana for, um, taking great minutes.
Thank you so much. That was unnecessary, but I'll put that in the minutes.
Um.
I had a quick question to Steve on that. How's the rewrite going? Are we still on track for drafts in the summertime to us? I just had a quick question to Steve on that. How's the rewrite going? Are we still on track for drafts in the summertime to us?
Um, yeah, we, we, you know, we, we were hoping to get something to you. You know, ideally it was going to happen in May, but with some of the changes, we were pretty substantial. So that's got probably good pushback. Hopefully sometime um, in June. So I'm going to get them uh, revised information tomorrow or Friday and have a conversation with them next week. And then I'm sure they'll be busy, you know, making edits. So as soon as that's ready, we'll, we'll get it to you.
And is the ultimate goal still trying to go through the public and vote by end of year?
I, I, yeah, I think that's, I think that's still a realistic goal because I, if ideally you guys get it sometime in June, that'd be great. And then we could sit on it for the summer, basically, where you guys can just, you know, we could talk about it. Um, and then I, I think you guys could open up a public hearing sometime in September and then discuss changes. And I think what I was thinking about on my end was going out and reaching out to all the neighborhood groups and going to them individually and having meetings to talk about it. And then circle back as a commission, you know, sometime um, end of October, early November to, you know, s- see where things are at. And then get, hopefully get final edits to the consultant to turn back around.
And um, I, 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 I wanted to explain, um, you know, we had quite a number of commission members uh, out this evening. Um, with um, very good reasons. I thought I might just mention what they are. Um, you may remember at last week's meeting, we had a message from uh, Steve that he had had a car accident and had suffered a, a head injury. Um, he's still apparently in uh, some pain and uh, so was unable to uh, join us tonight. Uh, Tammy um, uh, said that her uh, husband was taking her on a surprise trip um, for their thirtieth anniversary. That's very nice news. And unfortunately Hector's uh, family is ill. Um, he made some reference to the uh, flu uh, running through his family. So those are the reasons folks warm with us, very good reasons. Um, um, unfortunate that uh, uh, Steve and um, uh, Hector are having these uh, issues. Not so unfortunate for Tammy. Um, and with that, uh, I will accept a uh, motion to adjourn.
Hi, Mike.
Mike made the motion. I'll take Darius's attempt to make the motion as a second.
Absolutely. And I sent some links on ADUs.
Oh.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Take care. See you on uh, June second.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night.